All right, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Can we do a round, uh, roll call?
Roll call, Clark. Sugimura. Suji. Absent, Whitfield. Absent, Arkaki. Absent, Fitch. Fitch. Nope, absent, Kiyah.
Present.
Online.
Wood. Anderson. Burgess. Absent, Glenn. Imamura Uru. Esperito.
Here.
Online. And Mizusawa. Chair Yefor.
Um, and then right after that will be the federal state official reports. Okay, so, um, so just a little bit changed from our normal way of going about business. After that, then we'll move into the community concerns from residents. At this point, I'm gonna tell you right now, I want you to limit those to three minutes each. And if I hear residents repeating, uh, the same issues over and over again, I will move you on quickly, okay? All right, we'll start off, Honolulu Fire Department. Okay, nothing heard, Honolulu Police Department.
Hello, I'm online, um, Tony Hong representing District Three. Working on a pro city police station. Going over the monthly stats for January. There are ten compared to two burglaries, there are four in January compared to seven. Deaths, there were thirty-one compared to twenty-two, and car break-ins, there were ten compared to seventeen in December. Costs for service in January, there were one thousand three hundred forty-two calls in January compared to one thousand three hundred seventy-six in December. The tip of the month is always be mindful of your surroundings and keep valuables out of sight. Kind of links to the case that I was gonna share tonight. It occurred on January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five at around six forty PM at the Pro Ridge Center near the Jen Korean Restaurant. Synopsis is two suspects approach a male, uh, uh, two suspects approach an adult. The suspects brandish handguns and demanded the male victim's gold chain necklace. Once they retrieved the necklace from the male, the suspects then fled the area in an awaiting vehicle. In this instance, no one was injured. Um, about an hour later, the same suspects, this time three of them, entered the twenty-four hour bait store in Cunea. And they also brandished handguns, demanding electronics, money and bait products. Uh, one of the store employees was assaulted during this incident. And they also fled in a wait, the same awaiting vehicle in the parking lot. Uh, this time however, an off-duty officer coming out of Walmart observed the vehicle speeding away. Thought it was suspicious, so he obtained its license plate. Uh, he later called and just checked if there were any, um, crimes that occurred, and of course, that nine-one-one came, nine-one-one call came in, so that vehicle was APB'd. Or broadcasted as a suspect vehicle island-wide. Later in the night, the vehicle was observed in the Nanakuli area. And after police attempted to stop it, it, um, ended near the beach where the suspects all fled on foot in the darkness. An extensive search was conducted along the beach as well as the surrounding homes. And all three suspects were apprehended at about, um, eleven PM that night. Due to the efforts of the officers, two of the suspects were adult males, twenty-three-year-old and twenty-one-year-old. They were charged with the bail set at twenty thousand, uh, sorry, two hundred thousand dollars each for robbery in the first degree. And the third suspect was a sixteen-year-old male who was held at the detention home. So that was a good case that, uh, our guys did, but if there are any questions, I'm available to answer at this time. Sorry, you guys could hear.
Sorry. Oh, hi, now I can hear, sorry, I couldn't hear for a little while.
Hello?
Hi, I can hear you now.
Okay, um, good evening Chair Wood, members of the I A N Neighborhood Board and members of the community, I'm Tracy with Board of Water Supply. Um, I'm here to share our monthly report. Okay, as far as main breaks go, there were two main breaks in this Neighborhood Board District last month. On January eleventh, there was a six-inch main that broke on Kalike Place, this is lower I A A. And on January seventeenth, there was an eight-inch main that broke on Palai Alii Way, and that's up Halava Heights. Um, Board of Water Supply would like to, um, encourage people to report water waste when they see it. We actually have, um, several ways to do it. So if you see water being wasted, such as a broken pipe, a malfunctioning sprinkler, a running faucet, excessive watering, or something similar, please let us know so that we can follow up and stop the unnecessary water loss. To report water waste, you can visit our website at boardofwatersupply.com/waterwaste. Or you can email us at contactus@hbwss.org. Or you can call eight oh eight seven four eight five zero four one. Let's make every drop count and do our part to conserve our precious and limited water supply. Water is life. And I have one more piece of information to share, and this is, um, a response to Chair Wood's, uh, question last month about, um, the cost of constructing the Board of Water Supplies Monitoring Well at Site A in Halava District Park. The contract was awarded at two million nine hundred sixty thousand six hundred ninety-six dollars to Alpha Inc. And with that, that's my report. Thank you. Oh, I'm glad. Um, I'm not sure if that's just for one well or if it was for the, oh, okay.
Okay. Board, any question for the Board of Water? Okay, uh, Board, uh, any other questions? Nothing heard, Tracy, thank you.
Thank you for your.
Thank you for the good news, by the way, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Oh, HFD's here, ah, I heard you guys sirens outside, is that, was that you guys trying to get here real fast?
Good evening, Captain Mukul, I have fire station. Yeah, apologize for being late, we just came from, returning from an alarm. We got firefighter Matt Ross here is gonna give you guys our, our stats and our tips for this one.
All right, outstanding, thank you, go ahead.
Good evening, firefighter Matt Ross from IFR Station. We do the statistics for the month, uh, these statistics provided represent confirmed number of incidents in the Neighborhood Board's geographic area for the previous month of January. For more details on these incidents and related mapping information, please visit the fire response map on our HFD website at fire.hulu.gov under the News and Echo tab. If you have questions, please email hfdpublicaffairsandmedialieison@hfdnhb@hulu.gov. Uh, we don't see any previously requested information here. Um, the statistics for January are fires, we had one structure fire. Uh, zero well-underbrush fires, uh, three nuisance fires, that's sort of like a rubbish fire or something outside a structure vehicle. Um, zero cooking fires and eleven activated alarms where no fire was. Other emergencies, we had one hundred and fifteen medical emergencies, we had zero motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians. Three motor vehicle crash or collisions, zero mountain rescues, zero ocean rescues, and one hazardous material incident. What's our statistics for the month? Uh, this month's fire safety tips and announcements are power outage preparedness. Here's a few ways you and your family can be prepared for a power outage. Number one, prepare your supplies, ensure your flashlights, radios, et cetera, contain batteries that are charged. Don't forget to charge extra batteries. Uh, prepare your family, check in with family members, if anyone relies on medical devices requiring power, ensure you plan ahead. Prepare food and water, set your fridge and freezer to the coldest settings, keep them closed as much as possible during an outage. Fill up water containers for drinking and other need. Check your electronics, unplug unnecessary electronics to prevent damage from power surges. Never touch down our lines, always assume that any power line is energized and dangerous. For more safety tips, visit hulu.gov/DEM. Learn about power outages at wineelectric.com/stormcenter. Any questions?
Uh, Board members, any questions for HFD? Community members, any questions for HFD? Okay, nothing, thank you guys for, uh, the report. Have a good night. Okay, uh, Hawaiian Electric. Okay, moving on, Stadium Authority.
Hi, good evening Chair, good evening Board, it's me. It's me, Chris is out this evening, so I'm gonna actually do both. Um, but I do have David Harris that is able to answer any questions, so I'll just quickly go over, um, events for the current stadium. So this past weekend, we did host, um, which is pretty much our last concert, um, that we are looking at for the next few months. Um, again, this was with TMR, we had it on Friday and Saturday. Um, both attendance was roughly between six thousand and seven thousand attendees. Um, we had no major incidents, we did of course have some minor, um, EMT calls that were treated on-site. Um, we did note that we did have some small backup on Friday. It seemed everybody kind of showed up at the same time between seven and eight for that concert. Um, so we did get backed up a little bit, otherwise, um, traffic for ingress and egress were normal, um, you know, for both days of this type of event that we had. Um, so again, as I mentioned, we're pretty much wrapping up concerts for the next few months. Um, we do have a few other smaller events happening, um, this weekend, Friday, or excuse me, Saturday, February fifteenth and Sunday, February sixteenth. We will be, um, opening up our parking for a event concert that is going on at Mualua Gardens. Um, so they will have shuttle service from Upper Halava to Mualua. And that will be from two to eleven, we don't expect, um, a ton of parking, we're thinking maybe around a thousand if that. Um, and then of course, Great Aloha Run, our forty-first Great Aloha Run will end, um, at the stadium on Monday, February seventeenth. And then, I think I mentioned before, but get ready, Thursday, February twentieth, um, Girl Scouts will be starting to pick up their cookies at Lower Halava Lot. Um, so you'll start to see them throughout the island, so that'll be going on. And then just some kind of smaller, um, AMR driver training that will happen. Um, once we conclude with those events in February, we will actually be refocusing all of our efforts into preparing the Upper Halava Lot, um, for the swap meet transition. We are on target to relocate the swap meet in June. Um, we are currently working with our, um, operations team as well as the contractor that's helping us to redo the parking lot to get a better idea and layout, so hopefully, either in March or April, I'll be able to present, um, how the traffic flow is gonna go, how, um, parking will be, and, um, answer any questions you have in regards to the swap meet relocation. Um, moving on, I will, again, apologies, Chris isn't gonna be here today. So, um, as you know, we did host two community events, um, thank you for everyone who attended the first workshop. Uh, we did hold with our community leaders where HDP introduced that team, um, details in the proposal. Um, and our second one, which was our bigger one, um, was our public community workshop. Uh, we had roughly a hundred people in attendance, um, it was really well-attended and we appreciate everyone coming out. Everyone again, providing information, um, that we can take back with HDP. Um, we are looking to update the NACID website with the questions and answers from the community meeting. Um, we're looking to do that later this week, and then as soon as we get that, I will send that, um, link over to you Chair Wood, so that you can have that. And we'll also email those who attended or ask questions, um, and provide their email contact with more information on the link. Um, our e-newsletter for NACID will be coming out on February twenty-fourth. So again, that'll have a lot of information, um, in regards to the stages of the NACID project. And of course, we are working really closely with them, um, for the swap meet transition as well, because that was a, a big, um, concern that came up during the meetings, but that's all I have to report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Um, so I attended both the meetings, um, for the stadium. The initial meeting was just like, kind of, you know, community leaders and the developers, right? And then the second meeting was open to more of the public at that point, right? Um, you know, Samantha, I'm gonna say that the, the first meeting, actually, I felt like the developers act, actually answered better than at the community meeting. Because one of the questions that came up was about the swap meet, okay? And like, there's gonna be, uh, less space for the swap meet to operate in. Um, when we asked that question at the first meeting, the, the, the answer to us was, was that they look at the swap meet as being like an incubator for businesses. And as they get more successful, they move them into the brick and mortars, so that those brick and mortars at the stadium are filled with local businesses rather than mainland businesses. And I think that's a smart move, I think that's a smart idea. They didn't really say that though, at the second meeting, at the public meeting, they didn't really talk about that. And I think that would have alleviated maybe a lot of fears that were occurring, um, with, with, um, the vendors at the swap. You know, so, so, um, so those are just like little things that I, that they, that they mentioned to us previously, that they didn't really get into at the second meeting. Am I correct in that statement Samantha?
No, you are, you're correct, I, I think they did add, um, a map that kind of showed where the vendors were gonna be once the development was done. Um, but I think there was some questions that were unanswered, and I think that's why we're looking at, we're probably gonna host, um, something in March, April with the vendors. Um, right now, we're trying to focus on them to just relocate to the Upper Halava Lot. Right. And help them understand that they'll probably be there for the next, you know, five to ten years. Um, but again, their concerns that they brought up at that meeting was what happens after that, so that's definitely something that they have to address.
So going back to the timelines that she's talking about, so the idea right now is, is that, uh, they're gonna start doing the teardown in the summer, I think is what was talked about?
They're looking at, yes, so if all goes well, um, June, they'll issue.
Yeah, so, so then the summer, they're gonna start doing the stadium teardown. And then, um, finish stadium would be fall of twenty-eight, right, twenty-eight?
Correct, yep.
So, so, uh, in, in, in response to the new football season coming in in twenty-eight, okay?
Yes.
Um, and correct me if I'm wrong here though, but it will be the stadium and five buildings, correct?
He did mention that they are looking at doing kind of like a soft opening with the stadium as well as five different, um, facilities, I don't know if, yeah, David, if you wanna jump in, if you had any more updates? Yes.
Don't proceed, um, yes, I, I actually did mention five buildings. Um, ultimately, there's a fair bit of diligence and studies and investigations that need to take place over the coming several months. And we think by the time we execute contracts around summer this year, we'll have much more definition on that. But yes, it is absolutely the plan that there's other facilities that help achieve the entertainment district vision that are open and operating at the same time the stadium opens.
Right, so, so the idea is, is that those five buildings will be, the, the stadium and those five buildings will be the anchor for the rest of the development. That'll get basically like jumpstarts the rest of it, because, um, right now, the rest of it would be built by probably other developers, I think, correct?
Correct, so, yeah, generally correct, so they're gonna focus on this initial, um, tranche of buildings. And then how the rest of the development, um, comes out will be figured out over the coming months. They will do some buildings themselves, other buildings will be done, we expect by guest in office as well.
Right, okay, so, um, so that, that, that's pretty much the gist of, of what happened and what was talked about. And there's a whole bunch of other stuff, but you can, you can see that later online. Uh, I think that was the only things I really kind of wanted to cover, so I don't have to give a report later. So, um, um.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, I just rolled it into your questions and answers, so, okay, uh, okay, so Board members, any questions for the Stadium Authority based on what you just? Okay, Mike, or I mean Lawrence, sorry.
Yeah, I, um, the governor mentioned that he's trying to find an additional two hundred million dollars to throw in for the stadium project. Uh, what is the status of that, because that's gonna determine the final design, and that would probably need to be, I guess, figured into the design at this stage. I believe you want to put a lid on the stadium?
Yes, so, um, we are aware that the governor and some of his, um, I suppose, cabinet members are pursuing some additional funds. Um, that will obviously improve the stadium. Um, the short answer, I don't believe two hundred million dollars will be enough to put a lid on it. Um, but obviously will improve it markedly, but three hundred fifty million dollars that is currently appropriated, that gets us a pretty, pretty bare-bones stadium. Um, with that said, we, we are hopeful, um, those conversations that are going on, um, are a bit above Samantha's and my pay grade. Um, so unfortunately, we can't give any specific information on that at the moment, other than, you know, if, if it does come off, any additional funds would be helpful for the stadium.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and, um, so any other questions? Okay, so Board members, before I leave, there is one other thing, um, the, the developer that is actually developing this stadium developed the Chief Stadium and also the Philadelphia Eagle Stadium, correct?
Um, no, I think there might have been some confusion in, um, as part of this group, they have the Cordish Group of Companies.
Right.
Cordish Group developed things such as, um, the Power and Light District in Kansas City, which I believe is, is adjacent to, um, the Chief Stadium. They developed Battery Park in Atlanta, which is, um, you know, a big entertainment district similar to what we're trying to achieve with the NACID. Um, and several other kind of sports entertainment focused districts where they really bring the kind of non-event day and event day activation to a district. It's not more than just a stadium, more than just a ballpark, that's, that's the Cordish Group there, we're very excited to have them involved in this project.
All right, I say I corrected then, I, I thought they had actually developed the Chiefs Stadium, but, okay. Um, all right, so community members, any questions for the Stadium Authority? Okay, nothing heard? Move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, okay, O triple C. Nina.
Good evening Chair Wood.
Good evening.
Members of the Board and Community, I am Bettina Maynard, I am the lead of the design team for O triple C. Um, I was prepared tonight to give a brief update, I mean, still am prepared, a brief update on our, um, ACA conference attendance and, um, builds that are currently going through the legislature. However, we have a very special guest here with us, Director Tommy Johnson from DCR. Um, he can answer some of the questions that were, well, brought up at the last month's, um, meeting, so given that we only have five minutes, I had hoped for ten.
Okay.
I'm gonna hand this over.
Well, Bettina, I really appreciate the quickness of your little brief there, so thank you so much.
Yeah, I was hoping you would say, you know what, if you're here, we're gonna listen to your ten minutes of.
As much as I like to go over the bills that are being going through the legislature right now, I really appreciate your, uh, yes, thank you, thank you for your briefness. Okay.
Good evening Chair, members.
Good evening, how are you?
The Board and members of the community and those online, I'm Tommy Johnson, the Director of Department of Correction and Rehabilitation.
When we were, when I did the tour down O triple C, right?
That is correct.
That's what I thought, okay.
So I, uh, my understanding is the Board has some questions or concerns regarding the Community Transition Center, it's just gonna be part of the new O triple C build, so I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, appreciate that, uh, and I think we do have a lot of questions actually, um, I wasn't prepared though to do that. Um, uh, but, um, hmm, do you guys remember last month?
Oh, I can leave?
Hold on, no, I'm not saying that yet, okay, you just, you just, grab his leg or something, okay, here, um, but hey, Lawrence, are you online? Question, right?
Yes.
Were, did you ask any questions about O triple C last month? I can't remember, I was, I think it was you though.
Um, I know there are discussions as far as how the prisoners are gonna get to and from the transition center.
Right.
So I wasn't sure if they are gonna be bused or if they're gonna catch, um, state vehicles to and from wherever they're doing their training outside. Is that something that can be addressed?
Yes. So, uh, the transition center comprises, in the early stages of planning and design, three different buildings side by side. Uh, one we envision to be a treatment center, one location we envision to be a parole probation violation, uh, location, we do assessments. And before putting them in a hard bed, which costs, which costs three hundred and seven dollars a day, we do an assessment and try to get them back out. And the third is where we have the community work lines and the work furlough program, we're gonna keep the Lamaka work furlough program where it is and add additional beds, we can move people downstream faster. All the buildings will be secure buildings, which means even though it's outside the fence, they can't exit the building without being let out. It is our plan to do one of two things. One is all people who are picked up, who are going to programs are picked up by the programs and taken to the program. Those that are going out for work furlough, we have one of two plans, a transport team will take them to the Halava Hub where they can catch the bus. Or we might enter into a rideshare, uh, contract to take them to work and then come back. That's where we stand on that, so there'll be nobody walking around the community, uh, nobody, uh, walking free in the community, even though they're community in minimum custody, we will have certain procedures in place to make sure they get to the location and from location back to the secure facility where they'll be housed.
And they will have like certain, like pickup times and drop-off times they have to be at and things.
Correct, so we'll have a transport team for that, but we also have, we're looking at a rideshare contract as well, because some of the, uh, employers, they have different hours, particularly in the service industry, we wanna try to accommodate that so they can work those hours, we can get them to work and back safely.
Okay, uh, any other questions, Lawrence?
Okay, as far as, um, when they're traveling, are they gonna have GPS monitors on them?
At that level, at that level of security, they really don't need it, to be perfectly frank, if we have to put a monitor on them, they shouldn't be out in the community.
So what kind of, what kind of, um, uh, people are we talking about?
We're talking about.
What kind of infractions have they committed?
I think the infraction is not the issue, it's the custody classification level. So we have five different level of custody, we have, uh, close, maximum, medium, minimum, and community custody. Everyone in the transition center will be minimum or community custody. Community custody means they can go out on their own, they've demonstrated the, the ability to do so in return. Minimum custody means we will need to transport them there and back again. But these are all people who have worked their way down the classification system from medium all the way down through demonstrated behavior and ability to follow, uh, terms and conditions of their release.
Can you give me an idea, like, what medium is, because I'm.
Well, medium won't be there, medium will be at Halava Correctional Facility where they don't come out of the facility at all, even on the work line.
Right, but you said they worked their way down.
They worked their way down, so medium security. So medium security would be that all programs are done in a facility, double fence in a facility, and they won't travel outside the facility unless they're under armed escort to the hospital or to a medical appointment. Minimum security, they're still under armed escort to hospitals, medical apartments, but they're not necessarily in a facility where there's a fence. Good example of that is, is, uh, Waialua Community Correctional, Waialua Correctional Facility, no fence, Launy Correctional Facility on the, on the. Lonnie Correctional Facility on the, on the Big Island. Those are minimum in community custody where they don't require offense at all.
And one other question, and I'll board if you guys want to jump in at any point. So when we talk about medium incarceration, what type of infraction have they committed to garner in a medium, you know, medium incarceration?
Okay, so we're clear, every offender who's a immediate, once they're sentenced.
Yes.
They're in medium custody, every offender.
Every offender?
Every offender.
Okay, so it could be credit card fraud and they would.
Doesn't matter as a violent offense or a white collar offense, they have to work their way down the classification system. So everyone, when they're initially convicted or in medium custody, if they do some kind of infraction, they go to higher custody levels, then they work their way back down to medium and from medium to minimum, from minimum to community.
Okay, so when we're talking about your halfway house, are we talking about individuals that have had violent crime?
Uh, we're not running halfway houses. The facilities, Community Transition Center is a secure facility outside the fence. A halfway house is in a community where the person pays between seven hundred to thousand dollars a month to room, to stay there, and they qualify under our, under community custody to be there, and they're paying for their own bid. Sometimes we will pick up the tab for thirty days, sixty days, ninety days as a transition.
Okay. So are we talking like rehabilit, so some of these individuals have been violent in the past, but maybe in like the last five years, they have not been, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, community member or board members, Jane? Hold on, hold on, let Jane go first, sorry, man, go ahead.
When the prisoners are released from their time in, their incarceration, where do they go? Do you just turn them out to the front yard or or do they travel somewhere?
Okay, well, there are four different types of releases, I'm making it clear. First is work furlough where they go out in the community every day and they come back and sleep in the facility. Second is extended furlough, that's after they've been a work furlough for a while, they demonstrate their ability to live in a community and be law by the citizens, they're allowed to then live in a clean and sober house, and we go to that location, we drug test them, we check their um employment every so often, they have to check into the facility about once a month. Then you have release on parole and they fall under the Hawaii Parole Authority supervision and jurisdiction. If they fail to abide by the terms and conditions of release, then Hawaii Parole Authority can issue a warrant for their arrest. Then you have those offenders that max out of their sentence, and we have no jurisdiction with those folks. And hopefully they have completed all the programs they're supposed to, so they are rehabilitated.
Jane? Well, some of them, some of them know, they're gonna go into this facility, they're gonna get transitioned in and or transitioned out, right?
Well, ideally, they transition through the sequential phasing process from medium security on down, they work their way down, they complete the program, they get paroled, they go through work furlough, they're on furlough to get extended furlough in the community, they get paroled, and ideally they max out on parole. Some offenders, however, are returned to prison, parole authority maxes them out, and they then, we try to adjust, do programs, but once their expiration term expires, we have to let them go, we can't hold them no matter what.
What percentage of these groups make up the whole?
Well, we have thirty seven hundred and seventeen people in our custody, including those on the mainland, about nine hundred and thirty seven. Uh, at any given time, there's between seven hundred and twelve hundred people on parole. Judiciary has fourteen thousand sentenced felony probationers on parole. And then we have a small cadre of maybe a hundred to a hundred and fifty people on uh work furlough and maybe sixty or so on extended furlough. We're trying to extend our work furlough beds, we can get more people uh downstream and working in the community, become uh contributing members of society, so we can reduce recidivism but have safer communities.
Okay.
I hate to say it, but I've heard through the radio and uh broadcasting systems that a lot of these prisoners and inmates don't return, they kick off and they leave that facility and they're out in the community. And that's a threat to people who are, you know, not happy about the situation, but you've heard a lot of, you know, people that, men that don't return, they just leave, you know, try to make it out on their own, and that can cause problems with the community people, because they're not used to seeing these, you know, people walking around, unless they have help to help them out, you know, that's my concern. Whenever I hear someone has not returned, you know, he's gonna get in some kind of trouble and, you know, whatever his protection is, but I don't like to hear anyone leaving, you know, and being a threat to the people who are not prepared to handle such a situation. That's my concern.
I understand, I want to be clear, though. For every one person that walks away from a furlough, that's a personal choice, they've earned their way there, they've have, they have uh met the criteria, they passed the accessory instruments. For every one person that walks away, a hundred people are successful. We simply cannot control human behavior. So what we do is we prepare them through re-socialization as much as we can, and then we allow them to work their way to work furlough. Uh, but I do have to tell you, ninety nine point nine of the people walk away, we capture, we live on the island, where are they gonna go?
Yeah.
The, 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 the ideal for us is to catch them before they commit the crime.
Right.
And so what you'll hear on the radio is, you'll hear on the news that uh Mr. inmate Smith didn't return, you have a short description of him, but what you don't know in the background is, we're already on all of his uh known associates, we're already contacted family members, we're already sitting on the homes where we think that that person will go, we know what their collateral connections are. And so what's behind this, and that's why we get the vast majority of them. So we do, we are proactive as much as possible.
Thankful for that.
Thank you.
That answers my question, thank you.
Thank you.
I think there's like a special unit that goes over and tries to capture them, right?
We have a apprehending unit, yeah, sheriffs, but we also work with the FBI. And we have sheriffs assigned to the task force to go out and get, it's called the Safe Streets Initiative.
Uh, somebody's hand was raised?
Yeah.
Russell, go ahead.
Yeah, Director, I think the last time we had a, there was a number of questions, I don't think it was really quite answered. Um, the, the question centered around the, what you call the halfway houses, and they're running to, those questions about are there h- halfway houses in I A A today? And if so, where are they?
Well, I want to be clear, uh halfway houses, uh we call clean and sober houses that want contracts with the state or the city and county have to register with the Department of Health, they have a registry for clean and sober houses. Now, there are a number of those operations that are not on the registry to operate, and I couldn't tell you where those were, because we don't refer clients to them, because we cannot. But those that do operate are on the registry with the Department of Health and the Department of Health.
What is the difference between those registered and those that are not?
Well, those that are registered can receive contracts with the state and the city and county. Those that are not registered, who didn't go through the conditional use permit with the neighborhood boards, they operate kind of in the shadows and they can get contracts. I couldn't tell you where those were, because we don't refer clients to them at all.
Basically, Russell, I think is what he's saying is, is there's like private ones, and then there's like ones that are public that can get contracts.
They're legitimate.
Yeah.
Well, so when you say halfway houses, they're not under the watch of your department? Or any department of the state?
Department of Health has jurisdiction over the clean and sober homes, which is another term for halfway houses, but they're, they only have jurisdiction over those that register and then meet the requirements to be on the registry.
Okay, so uh, so anyone that is on parole then? That is outside of your department?
Well, the Hawaii Parole Authority is a ministry attached to us, but the Hawaii, I was the administrator for HPA for sixteen years, they will not refer any parolee to stay in any unregistered home, for sure.
Okay.
Okay, uh, let, oh, go ahead, Russell, one more question.
The question though was, are there these halfway houses in I A A, and if so, where are they?
Again, the halfway houses that operate on the registry, you would be able to get that from Department of Health. Those that are operating outside the registry, we would not know where they were, because we don't refer clients to them.
Okay, so Department of Health.
Yes.
Okay, um, okay, board members, any other questions?
Chair Wood?
Go ahead, Francie.
Um, I think it might have been Board Member Higa had, had brought up the concern about air quality due to the quarry nearby for um outside um use of jailmates at the facility.
Okay, Lawrence, did you bring that up last meeting about inmate air quality?
Or previous meeting, I don't know if it was last meeting.
Okay.
I brought it up earlier on, as far as um mentioning that to the uh the state, because if it's not considered now, it's not gonna happen uh immediately, but five, ten years out when the actual facility is in operation, the prisoners are gonna start getting health issues, the prisoners, the guards. But as long as they know that there's a potential for that happening as far as um that quarry dust settling on and around the prison, um, that's the best that I can do as far as just informing them. So if they take all the precautions, I know they mentioned they're gonna have air conditioning, but I'm sure they do things out in the yard. So I'm not sure if they're gonna have air quality monitors around the prison, but main thing, they know the concern and it's up to them whether they address it or not, because when something happens, it's not gonna be one person. It's gonna be several or hundreds of prisoners or guards that's gonna file issues with the state.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Lawrence. Um, just to, I'll add in a little tidbit there. When May and myself and I think it was Councilmember Cordero, right? We went and toured the, the submit quarry, and um they do um dust remediation efforts there, um watering and things like that. Um, and then they also do air quality tests on a regular basis. But I think, I think you're absolutely right, where we probably need to um go back there at some point in the future and uh take a look and see if they're still doing what they've been doing. So.
If I could add to that.
Yeah, go ahead.
We worked with the US Navy to put air monitoring equipment at the Halawa Correctional Facility when the issue with Red Hill first come up, first came up. Uh, to my knowledge, and I've been a deputy director from two thousand seven to two thousand ten, and I've been a deputy director from two thousand twenty to twenty two when I became the director, we have not had one uh workers comp or inmate complaint regarding any type of dust issues at Halawa. And uh we will put air monitoring equipment at the new O triple C, and I suspect we won't have any issue there, because we work with the quarry too, because they have consistently every day watered down the quarry.
Yeah.
Every day.
That's what they told us.
Several times.
And we, that we watched in actions when we're there, so.
But thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, okay, uh, gonna go ahead and move on. If we have more que, I know Claire, I'll get to you in a second. Um. Board, though, I want to add, like, if if this is a continual thing that we should probably do, I'll add it to the agenda at some point in the future. Okay, so just let me know if, if um when I come back, we can add it to the agenda. Okay, I'll get it in there. Thank you for showing up, though, but Claire, you have one more thing? Are you sure? I'm giving you the opportunity now. Okay, all right, all right, okay, all right, thank you, sir, for your time, appreciate it. Okay, moving on, Pearl Ridge Shopping Center, David, I don't think he's here, I think he said he is not gonna make it. Okay, I'll be meeting with him next week, though, so, so if there's anything that comes up, I'll let you guys know. Uh, US Navy and Department of Defense, hey, guys, welcome, good to see you again. So it's been an interesting time since the last time we saw each other, say the least. Parking is great on bases right now, I'm just letting you know that, so it uses, it looks literally like a used car lot everywhere. Okay.
Aloha, board, community, Victor Flynn, Public Works. First on the list, update with the Dry Dock Five project, things are moving forward. We just got uh finished working on our six four, six of nine ports, this is for the concrete floor of the Dry Dock. And then all parts of the major components of the Dry Dock are constructed on White Peel Peninsula and barged over to the shipyard, this way uh it doesn't tie up the traffic, so that's the latest, more info to come.
Okay, so before you drop off of that, when do they have, when are they expect to have that completed?
Uh.
You know? If you don't know, just say it.
I, I don't know, but I'll get that info for you.
Um, because I think we'll probably have them come in for at least one more brief before that.
Oh, yeah. That would be um Stephen Patty.
Yeah.
And he knows that already.
So I missed the last time they were briefed, I think I got, I was not feeling too well that night, and so I missed the last time they were here to brief, and um, yeah, so I'll get them back in.
And that was also covered in the last time he was here, too, he did give a approximate completion date. And you guys have the slides, but I'll get back with you, just to make it easy.
Yeah, I can go dig through it, I guess, but, okay.
Uh, and uh Hokulea, the double hold Polynesian sailing vessel, January eighteenth to the twenty fourth, Hokulea was docked at our Pearl Harbor's Rainbow Marina. A week-long event of hosting schools and civic clubs and groups. It was very educational, very exciting, and we're happy that we had a chance to have Hokulea at Pearl. And last, um Pearl Harbor Restoration Advisory Board. It was on December eleventh at the Oahu Veteran Center in Foster Village, that thing turned out really good, we had a great turnout. Full house, about sixty people, and the next event, uh, the RAB meeting is on April sixteenth. And then one last thing is uh Navy's hiring, NAFAC is hiring, and those announcements are on the table right now.
Okay.
Those who are interested in good paying full-time jobs with benefits.
Outstanding.
Ms. Lydia?
I'd like to hear that.
Good evening, uh, I brought copies of our weekly Mo'lelo that has a lot of updates, um, some good work being done at Fish Ponds both here and then over at Piamoraf, so I encourage you to take a look. And then three other things, I've mentioned before, we're doing ship tours on Saturday mornings over at the base. Um, one Saturday a month, if you have groups that are interested, please let me know, um, twenty people. The next Community White Boat is February twenty first, I know we've had participation from I A A before. Again, let's let me know if anybody's interested. And finally, Lo Lima Navy, our effort to document two hundred and fifty acts of of volunteer community service between October of twenty twenty four and October of twenty twenty five, which is the Navy's two hundred and fiftieth birthday. We are almost at a hundred right now, and we're not halfway through the year. Let us know of opportunities that you would like to have volunteers at, and we'll distribute that to our network and try to get some good word out for community involvement. And that's all I have.
On the ship tours, real quick, uh, what, what ship, what kind of ship tours are you?
Uh, these will be destroyers that are pier side.
Okay.
So it'll be basically from nine in the morning till about eleven in the morning on Saturdays.
All right.
We'll meet people out at uh Nimitz Pass and ID, bless them onto the pier. Um, they get to talk to the crew, but Saturdays is often a day that people uh works better for them, because they can't because of jobs, being teachers or school kids. And we'll take uh school groups as well, if interested, or, you know, Cub Scouts, uh scouts, any type of uh community group.
Okay, great. And you have like a link or something that they can go to, or re, or an email address or something?
Right now, it's my email.
Okay.
So if someone doesn't have that, let me know, I've got cards with me.
Right.
Lydia, Lydia dot Robertson at Navy dot.
Okay, uh, if anybody asks, I'll, I'll board them to you then. Okay, great, thank you. All right.
Good evening, Chair, board members and the community. Um, quick update, uh, we have uh, we'll be, uh Navy Closure Task Force will be hosting a tank cleaning information webinar five PM um on February twenty fourth, and I left handouts on the table, so with the QR code, so you can listen in. Um, and then um we started our pressure washing of tanks seven and eight, um that uh started in January. And then we do have another open house, March twelfth, five to seven PM at Kehe Lagoon, the Edward Lost Manos Room, and that's will um we will showcase uh displays, you can meet our um subject matter experts um that are continuing with the cleaning of the tanks, um the, and the restoration.
So has there been a determination on what they're gonna do with those tanks after then?
Not that I know of.
Okay, because I know they went and asked the community, like, hey, what do you guys want us to do with this stuff, right?
Did a study, yeah.
Yeah. Do we know the results of that, or?
Uh, no, like definite uh determination.
Okay.
For the usage of, but it's closed.
Right.
We don't intend to fill it.
Right.
Anymore.
Yeah, I get, I get that, but it was more about like the historical aspects of it, because, you know, those were built in nineteen forty six, I think. And so there's a historical aspect to it, there's also repurposing of it for some other means, you know, that we could do. Um, could be tied to, you know, I think my suggestion was to tie it to the Pearl Harbor Memorial and tie it, you know, and that way it'd be another like tour that could be, you know, buses could go up there and like people could tour the facility and so.
Yes, that was, that was on the survey, it was one of the options.
Yes, and so, so um, I'm just curious if we've made a determination yet on what we're.
Not a hard.
Yeah, okay, all right, okay, uh, anything else, all right, go ahead.
I don't think I've had any unanswered questions, but I'm getting back to the the um presentation that's slated for March eleventh?
Yes.
Okay, with our director.
Right, yes, yes.
Yeah.
So I was gonna get you on this one, but uh for everybody, ooh, really loud on this. Um, for everybody that needs to know, try and get those like requests to get on the agenda two weeks prior to the, this actual meeting, because I owe him the schedule or the agenda a week prior.
Okay.
Okay? And then I like to, I like, I do like to send it out to the board and let them get a chomp on it before I actually put it on the agenda. So, okay, all right.
Are you like, are you, yeah?
Yeah, thank you, okay, uh, don't leave yet, board members, any questions for Navy? Uh, community members, any questions for Navy? Uh, community members, any questions for Navy?
And Chair Wood?
Uh, go ahead.
Yeah, on the other meeting, I thought the meeting, um, I had a question regarding bringing, bringing that Halava well back online, because the Navy is mentioning that we're looking at doing that. And I was asking what kind of timeline um that would take, and they said it depends on the Department of Health. Is there any update on that, uh, when you can bring that Halava well back online?
We've, we've posed that question back on Department of Health, and they have not come back with an answer.
Okay, so as far as the well itself, so you're, you're inferring that the well is okay and fine right now to start supplying water? That's not gonna be an issue serving water back out to um, I guess, that Pearl Harbor area?
Um, sorry, can you repeat the question, Larry?
Are you inferring that the water is okay coming out of that Halava well, and it can start serving that Pearl Harbor area again?
I'm, I'm not the subject matter expert to make that determination, but we did ask them the question, and they have not responded as of today.
Okay, who are you talking at Department of Health?
I've passed it over to our chief and our information officer, who really, who works with the SMEs and the Department of Health, and they have not given me the response back to, to provide back to you. But I, I will, I will follow up with them and then um ask if they could um expedite their response.
Okay, because there is um high probability that there's some migration of pollution that's running down toward another border water supply well. And if that other well should get contaminated, it's gonna put a strain on our water system. So I just was wondering if it's in the Navy's view that the well can be brought online back in like five years, ten years, twenty years, or never, because if the well can never be brought online, we need to look at another water source, as I mentioned, desalinization plants. And for instance, they have one up on the West Coast. It costs roughly a billion dollars. It generates fifty million gallons of drinking water per day. It uses reverse osmosis. But that's something that the Navy has resources that they could do something like that. It has to be close to the ocean. So it would be perfect for the Pearl Harbor area. But because of what's going on, if another border water supply well goes down, you know, we're gonna have a serious problem as far as drinking water for the island of Oahu.
I, I remember you asking Ernie Lau a couple months ago, when, uh, when he was here about that. And then I remember his response to you was that uh he doesn't see anything currently as a as a threat right now, but I will definitely put the question back on DOH for the five, ten, and fifteen-year timeline. But I did, I did add, I did ask them about that timeline in the question that you asked last month.
Okay, let me check you on that Ernie Lau comment, because from what I recall him saying was that they're already straining the wells out in the, I guess, the Honolulu area. And they tried to do more pumping, but what happened was the water became more um brackish. So once that, that starts happening, they're pumping too much water out of it. So once they noticed that, they backed off on the pumping. So as far as the overall capacity of the island, if one more well, border water supply well should get contaminated, we're gonna have a serious issue, but if the Navy steps up and see, brings back the Halava well back online, it's not gonna be an issue, because then the state can follow what the Navy did. And they're gonna know that within two years or five years, they can bring the well back to producing potable water again. That's, that's the concern.
Yes.
Hold on, hold on. Hey, Lawrence, can we, can we go ahead and um revisit this next month when the director is here, right? Might be a good opportunity to do that. And then I'll give them an opportunity to talk to DOH too, and we can get an answer for you.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Claire? Yes, you do. Sorry.
Um, we talked about um the Dry Dock and the work of the Dry Dock. Along with the Dry Dock, there was a give back to the community by um to do a memorandum of understanding to dredge the local, local pile. Do you know what the status of that is?
No, but I'll get back to you on this. Yeah. Or you can speak to them directly.
Use the mic, please.
Me?
Okay, we're just asking about the Dry Dock, I mean, the dredging of the local, local IP, uh, as a give back for the community, give back for the Dry Dock.
There's some.
Thank you, Vic.
Is there some, there's, from what I heard, there's an, there's some type of issue going on with the local. Do you know anything about that? That is what kinda tied everything up. So so let me get back to
Okay.
you with that one, okay?
Alright.
Is that okay, Board?
Yeah, we're good. Yeah. Bring it next month, please. Claire, you good? Okay. Alright, moving on. Uh, let's go to the mayor's rep. Haku, you're online.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yep.
Excellent. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, Haku Millis, Director Designate, uh, Department of Design and Construction. I'll try to keep it quick. Uh, a few things regarding Mayor's Newsletter. Hundreds attend a memorial service in Kakaako to honor Jeff Vaila, a Honolulu firefighter killed in the line of duty. Mayor Blangiardi, members of the mayor's cabinet are sworn into office, beginning a new four-year term. A new ninety-unit Bill Seven Affordable Housing Development breaks ground in Makiki. Uh, repairs begin on the seawall uh uh and walkway at Queen Surf uh in Waikiki near Barefoot Beach, Barefoot Beach Cafe, and the city unveils a new Apollo truck for Leewood Oahu Parks and uh beach parks. Uh, February twenty twenty-five edition of the mayor's newsletter can be found at honolulu.gov slash mayor slash newsletter. I'll put that in the chat. Uh, next, quick announcement, registration for the twenty twenty-five Neighborhood Board elections are now open. I mentioned it uh last month. Registration for the twenty twenty-five through twenty-seven board elections are now open. Candidates can register online at the Neighborhood Commission Office's website, honolulu.gov slash NCO. Voter registration is available via paper form also at honolulu.gov slash NCO. And questions can be directed at the NCO uh at eight oh eight seven six eight three seven one zero or NCO at honolulu.gov. Some important dates. Friday, February twenty-first, twenty twenty-five candidate and voter filing deadline. Uh, Friday, April twenty-fifth, voting begins, uh, and voting ends on Friday, May sixteenth. Um, some follow-up on previous issues. Member Higa asked who is responsible for parked vehicles damaging border water supply meters or on, on unimproved sidewalks. Um, BWS replied, if a vehicle damages a BWS meter cover, BWS must determine the responsible party, obtain a police report, and submit a damage report to their finance office for billing. Identifying the responsible party is often difficult, so they're typically not present and cannot be located. Please note that parking on sidewalks, whether paved or unimproved, is illegal, and residents are strongly encouraged to report these violations uh to HPD. Next, uh, member Esperito uh provide raised concerns about people living under the bridge by CPK at Pearl Ridge Center. There are reports of the individuals living there who are stealing from the nearby Sumita Farm and doing construction under the bridge. Uh, what is, who is responsible for cleaning the canals and streams? HPD replied that City County of Honolulu was responsible for Moanaloa Canal. Uh, District Three officers assisted the Department of Facilities Maintenance in a stored property ordinance, uh, SPO enforcement operation to clean up the area on January seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Officers issued one citation and two warnings for trespassing. Uh, outreach workers uh from Kialaho West were also on the scene, offering outreach services, but the individuals declined. Another SPO for the area of the canal has been scheduled or was scheduled for February fourth. Uh, next issue. Residents raised concerns about IAA stream near the IAA Korean United Methodist Church. Uh, the question was, who is responsible for cleaning this part of the stream owned by the church and who is liable for the debris and safety of people living along the stream? HPD replied, uh, the canal and foliage areas are owned by IAA Korean Methodist Church, and the area under the bridge is owned by City County of Honolulu. District Three assisted DFM and a SPO enforced Operation January sixteenth, as I mentioned. Debris and rubbish were removed from under the bridge, and outreach with Kialaho West was offered but declined. Uh, next, uh, there was a concern raised about trespassing and houses communities on uh Hekaha Street. What can the city do to address these concerns? HPD provided that since the property is privately owned, uh, HPD is unable to remove any persons from the property without the consent of the property owner or their agent. HPD will work on contacting the owner to see what can be done to safeguard and secure the property. Department of Planning and Permitting also weighed in. Uh, Port Enforcement Branch can be notified of the concerns regarding unpermitted structure, structures erected on the property. Uh, notice of violations can be issued by DPP for any discrepancies, which will hopefully bring attention to the current property owner. Uh, next, a resident reported tree overgrowth. Um, possibly um the property nine nine dash two seven two Ohenana Loop into Salt Lake Boulevard, who was responsible for trimming the tree. Department of Planning and Permitting held a site inspection on January twenty-seventh, which revealed there is dirt and dried leaves in the sidewalk area and branches from a private tree that are approaching in the sidewalk uh and the road on Salt Lake Boulevard's side of the property. A notice of violation, uh, this is NOV number twenty twenty-five slash NOV dash oh one dash one seven four was issued. In addition, the fence is also leaning onto the sidewalk, Salt Lake Boulevard. Uh, that's NOV. Uh, NOV was issued, NOV twenty twenty-five slash NOV dash zero one dash one eight five was issued. Um, DTS was also uh asked about this issue, but they defer to DPP, who has a jurisdiction. Um, next, a resident requested a protected turf left turn lane at the intersection of Salt Lake Boulevard and uh Kalalua Street. With the history of accidents in the area, can DTS conduct a traffic study of Salt Lake Boulevard and make a traffic safety improvements um decision on this roadway? Department of Transportation replied that uh they will conduct an investigation, which will require research, site inspections, a traffic study, uh, and an analysis of the area's traffic collision history. DTS will inform the board of their findings once the investigation is completed. Uh, that is my report and happy to take any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Board members, any questions for the mayor's rep? Hey, Haku, I noticed that there is teams down there today clearing out uh Halava Stream as well, so um.
Excellent.
Hats off, hats off to those guys and hats off to you for getting that situation resolved.
Thank you.
Okay, um, alright, community members, any questions for the mayor's office? Claire? Please just pull the chair.
Yeah, I know. So, uh, how cool. I know, um, you checked out, um, the building permits for the building that's coming up on Wanaloa Road behind IAA Shopping Center. Recently, I noticed that they have the sidewalk closed, and they're breaking the sidewalk. Do you know what's happening there? Is that a permit? Can you find out what's happening there?
Yeah, I can, we can look into it. Typically, you know, we have to private developments have to break the sidewalk if they're gonna put in a permitted driveway access. Uh, so that could be what is happening there. I don't know for sure. Um, but uh there, it's usually incorporated into the design, and then it must be rebuilt to standard um before any permits are closed or anything like that, and it's accepted. Uh, so we can look into it.
Yeah, the sidewalk's just, the driveway's getting larger, I guess, wider. And there's not access into the property. Their driveway into the property is smaller. So I'm just wondering what kind of impact it'll have on the sidewalks and the people walking. Currently, it's closed. Okay.
Yeah, so it'll, it, it should meet the standard uh and meet the design once completed. Um, but it's something, thank you for bringing it to, to our attention. We can just let the EPP know and they could go check it out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, uh, we'll move on, and thank you for your report. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, Councilmember Cordero's office. Hi, how are you?
Good.
Good.
Good evening, Chair, Board members and community and those online. Uh, my name is Linda. I'm a councilmember in Cordero's office. I'm here representative this evening. I did provide a written report. It is also online, and um there's copies in the back if you did not receive any. Councilmember did want me to highlight a few things. On the first page for the community concerns, uh, we did receive a lot of complaints regarding the feral chickens. And uh residents are encouraged to contact the Sandwich Out Pest Solutions for assistance in addressing feral chickens on city property. Uh, their number is eight zero eight eight zero eight seven three seven zero. Um, yeah, that's not a mistake. It's eight zero eight eight zero eight seven three seven zero. And for other inquiries regarding feral chickens, um please visit the Department of Customer Service website at honolulu.gov forward slash CSD forward slash feral dash chickens. Um, and this information is also provided in the report. Um, other community concerns noted in the report, there are the traffic and safety improvements um in the district as well as park improvements to Makalapa Neighborhood Park. For the upcoming projects and initiatives, councilmember wanted to inform residents that the AT&T is working with Hawaiian Electric to install a small wireless facility on existing Hawaiian electric poles to improve um network coverage. For IAA, it will be near ninety-eight dash eight eight seven Wanaloa Road, and the work is expected to begin on February twenty-fourth for the Pearl Harbor Bright Path. Um, the portion of that path is closed for asphalt and concrete replacement and is expected to be completed by August um of this year. Now, detours are in place, and more information can be found on the second page of the report. Additionally, we do have information on about the Honolulu Rate Commission's public meetings that are being held, as well as the Affordable Housing Grant Program as well. On pages three and four provides a legislative update with actions being taken on a few measures, bills, and resolutions that councilmember would like to highlight. And um lastly, she, councilmember did attend the um she had the opportunity to join the community in celebrating and welcoming the Hokulea um as next month they will be celebrating her fiftieth anniversary. And so she just wanted to share that, and she wanna extend her, I'm sorry that she's not able to make it tonight, and um that concludes my report. I'm here to take back any questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, board members, any questions for Cordero's office? Online?
Chair Wood?
Lawrence?
You know, um, there's a bird flu going around, and I was wondering if you guys have procedures if we find a dead bird in our yard? Do we need to call somebody up or just pick it up and throw it away?
Uh, that might be, we've, um, DOH may have information. Um, we can um provide some information at the next meeting. I can't speak on um the procedures at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, any other questions for Cordero's office? Or, okay, community members, any questions for Councilman or Councilmember Cordero's office? Okay, thank you, ma'am, for your report. Okay, moving on. Councilmember Okimoto, hi.
Hello.
Long time no see.
Long time no see. Nice outfit today.
Yes, nice outfit.
We got the memo, but the very orange.
Yes, we planned it.
Good evening, Chair, members of the um, the board, both here in person and online. Councilmember Valakina Okimoto, um, District Eight. Happy to be here in person today. You have in front of you my written report, and I know that I, I don't come, I come to the boards probably in person quarterly, so when I do come, I tend to, sorry, take a little bit longer, but I did wanna highlight a couple of things that were prior to this month. Um, I did wanna thank Chair Wood for being a special guest with me on January second. The council had our inauguration, where we had the swearing-in of Councilmember Cordero and um a few others who had been re-elected or newly elected into the, onto the uh, the council. I was not a part of this election, so I'm happy to be there for the swearing-in. Thank you again, Chair Wood, for being there.
And I'm honored to be invited, so thank you.
Thank you. Um, at that time, we did also, I'm sorry, prior to that, in December, we actually said mahalo to Councilmember Sei, um, who had served for decades in the state legislature as well in the city council. I had the the pleasure and opportunity to serve with him, both in the state and the city, and I am sad that he was leaving us, but happy for him and his family and his retirement. He was a mentor and a friend to me, but from his um departure, we did the blessing of that as we added somebody to our team, Pua Smith Kalhane, who is online, and you will see her if you haven't already. She will be joining you as my representative um occasionally for the Neighborhood Board. Um, uh, my reports. She actually has experience. She's served on the NCO prior to being in Councilmember Sei's office. So Pua will be there. So Pua will be there. She does include links and if you have any questions, she'll take notes so that we can make it, uh, it can take it back to my office. Um, just to give you a little heads up, the, the, my written report does say, but I'm currently continuing to serve as the Chair of Public Safety. The committee is now Public Safety and Community Services. So that's a different, um, a customer, sorry, customer services. It's a little bit of a different, um, title, but still continuing to serve. I also am the Vice Chair of the newly titled Planning, Infrastructure and Transportation Committee. And Councilmember Cordero is the Chair of that. I also am a voting member of the Zoning Committee. As well as Innovation Technology and Entertainment and the International and Legal Affairs Committee. So just to give you a heads up. If you turn to my written report, you will see on the back on page seven, a legislative update. We are currently in, um, committee hearings week this week. And so we have committees Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Our full council will then be on. February twenty sixth, I believe, two Wednesdays from this week. So some of the measures that we are, um, addressing at this time, as it stated in the legislative update, we have a bill on, um. E-bikes as well as. Uh, Bill nineteen on reading to housing establishing a resident reference preference of the city's housing programs. I introduced a resolution in the public safety, in the Public Safety Committee. In order to ask the city auditor to conduct a performance audit of the fire plans review revolving fund. And that's something that we're going to be picking up again. Um, actually, I think it did, it passed full council. I apologize. It passed our full council of two weeks ago. And we have a few other measures on here. If you have any questions specifically, I, I can try to address that, but I did want to highlight something in here. Other than we are, we will, we will be meeting on February twenty sixth. Inside here, you have an insert. This will be actually mailed to, um, certain parts of the district, but I wanted to include this if you guys are able to. We will have this online as well. There's a, a district survey. I really value your input. My office and I work really hard to make sure that we're hearing the voices of the. The constituents in the district. So there is a survey on here as well as information on a town hall that we'll be having. This will be in Pearl City. So it's a little bit of a drive, but not too far, um, so within the District Eight boundaries and it will be scheduled for February twenty fourth. At Highlands Intermediate School from five thirty to seven PM. Happy to, we'll be happy to see you there. Um, at that time, I will be giving an update as well as taking any community concerns. That you may have, but if you could, please go fill out the survey. You have the option to fill it out manually. Or there is a QR code that you can do so digitally and, and submit that electronically. Um, just a few other things, Chair Wood is, uh, has been really, um, great in communicating. We have had several, um, meetings. I see. Um, Catholic charities here as well as people, the residents from Newtown, so I've been able to be involved in that communication. So thank you, Chair Wood, in taking the lead on that. We have.
And thank you for helping me with that too. You've been right there with me the entire time.
Trying. We really want to make sure that, you know, we listen to the concerns of our, of our community. But also try to see what we can do to work and be good neighbors. I appreciate the, the effort and. We'll continue. I know that the discussion is so ongoing, but just to let the, the, the board know and the committee, the community members that. I have been participating in that. It, that is not a, per se, a city issue at this moment, but. Anything dealing with our district, we and my constituents, I want to make sure that we're addressing, hearing their needs. Um, I think that might be. All I have on my notes, so I will take questions at this time.
All right, board members, any question for, uh? Councilmember Okamoto's office. So just to give you guys a little update, um, and I'll get in more into it when we go talk about the Catholic charities on the agenda. But, um, uh, yeah, we've been actively working that. In the similar vein we've done with like the retirement, you know, the senior care facilities that we've addressed in the past and those kind of things. So tackling it in that manner, hopefully we'll, we'll get to a point to where. Maybe not everybody gets everything they want, but, uh, there'll be a compromise, right? So that, and hopefully we'll get to that point. We'll see. So, okay. So let's move on.
Chair, if I could, I remember one thing, that's okay. I did, I did forget to say last month in my Public Safety Committee. I did have an informational briefing on fireworks. I know that's been a topic on, on everybody's mind, so if you want to, um. Kind of be aware of what's happening, we did have Major La, Mike Lambert, who at the time was with HPD, but he has now moved over to the state. Uh, for the law enforcement of that agency. If you'd like to see updates on that, we did have a really good discussion on it. I would encourage you to go back to the archives of last month's meetings and find that and I'll continue to be. Um, informing the, the community on what we're moving in that area, working with the state on some legislation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, community members, any questions for Councilmember Okamoto's office? Claire, I'm glad you pulled up a chair, by the way.
I did too. So, Councilmember Okamoto, I had a question regarding the council hearing that happened. That we dealt with the primary urban core. Um, and then also the lifting of the SMA, um, for the Special Management Area. For the Pearl Harbor, um, building, Poli Leepo. Uh, when you say, you listen to the constituents, I think the testimony was twenty five against lifting the SMA to one. In favor and only Councilmember Cordero voted, um, with the people and. Eight others voted again. So I wanted to know what some of your thinking was to that.
Thank you for the question and that project specifically, it is along the TOD, so that's a difficult one. In, in your question with the, I think you said the planning urban, um, development, is that what you were talking about? Do you, so we, we had meetings actually on this across the island. In all the parts of the island that the districts, districts that were affected by it, and we did have one. At that time, nobody had come from this community that, oh, actually, you guys might have had the One Aloa. I think I had one in, in Leeward at LCC. And you know, I, I always try to make sure that I make the most pragmatic and logical discussion decisions based on all the information and I understand. Where the community's concerns are, but based on all the information that was provided to me, this was a part of the, they had done all of their work with the, um. With their environmental studies. The, the example that they used was along, it, it was an exact model of what had been proposed years ago in the TOD. So that was my reason for, um, supporting the development. And I understand that the community had come out, Councilmember Cordero, um, had shared with me how that, that part of IAA, that's. That part of the district is actually, that part of the IAA is actually not outside of my district, but I wanted to, to, to make sure that I'm hearing. But, you know, I, in looking at all of the facts that I was presented, that seemed to be the best, um, decision. Um, and really, when we talk about the TOD, that's development, that's part, that's been planned for, for years.
So I think Claire makes a good point though, which was there's a plan, okay, and this went against the plan. So why have a plan? If you're just gonna go against it is the question.
Okay, well.
I mean, that's what you were saying, right? You want to talk to that real quick? Sorry.
Chair, Chair Wood.
TOD plan calls for no height limit, um, anything below Meme Highway, no, not being higher than sixty feet. And the proposed project is going to be a hundred twenty feet. That's twice the size and. In order to support, they're currently right there, right now, there's eight two-story buildings. And the proposal is going to be one eight-story building, which is going to have to send then a hundred feet pilings down into. Uh, property that is only five feet above groundwater. So, I mean, you know, it's not a, and then you folks lifted all of those, um. Special Management Area guidelines. And we just don't understand it. Yes, it is a TOD project. They said, I think, uh, Mr. Glenn brought up the fact that they said they don't have to have parking there. Because it's along the TOD parking, I mean, TOD, um, rail line. They have a hundred and fifty-three units and there's only a hundred forty-seven parking spaces. Now, realistically, yes, you don't have to have parking, but in Hawaii, to tell someone that they can't have a car. And most of those buildings are, most, most of the units, majority of the units, I think seventy-something of those units are two bedroom units. So I'm assuming they're going to be cars and the cars are then going to overflow onto the streets. Um, and that, those streets along the water, the shoreline are susceptible to flood. So that, that was just our point.
Well, I wanna, I want to thank you for sharing and, um, and I did share when the developers had come to me, I did say. One of the main concerns that I always hear. And usually these projects are not in my physical district, but I always hear. About the concerns of the height and I did ask him, I, I thought I was, it was six, but you're saying it's eight? It's eight, okay. Um, and they did say that, that. So I tell them, I said, usually what we have concerns of is too high and I, I knew it was two stories. I have. Friends, families who have lived in the current buildings and with residents there, so I will take a look again. I'm not, you know, I'm glad that you're speaking up again. Me personally, um, I was, I wasn't contacted. I think most of you actually live outside of my physical district, so maybe that's why you've. Contacted Councilmember Cordero, but we do vote, we all vote on, you know, issues that affect the entire island, so I, I will happy. Be happy to have my team sit down with me again and look over it and I'd say, okay, sure.
Yeah, Councilmember Okamoto, I was, uh, also concerned about many aspects of that project. And particularly the parking, you know, even though it's a transit oriented development, even if it, the. Train magically went to where these people work, they're still going to have cars. For being at home to go to the grocery store, go Costco, go to school, go to the beach, so they're going to have two cars per unit. So having less than one car per unit just doesn't make any sense at all. There's nothing magical about saying TOD, they don't need cars. You know, that, that's idiotic, to be honest. I'm not talking about you personally, you're obviously a very bright person. But for people to say like, we don't need to worry about parking because they're close to a rail station, doesn't make any sense for how we live as local people. And what I wanted to say is that, to be completely ignored by the council seven to one. It, it makes us discouraged from having input. I mean, it's nice that you have this, uh, survey, committee, we want your input. But we give you our input and then it's overwhelmingly ignored. So, yeah, I, I'm, thank you for looking into and revisiting the issue, but you can understand our frustration that we gave the input. It was overwhelmingly ignored, so giving you more input seems like a waste of time.
Well, I think, I'm sorry that you feel that way. I don't think there's ever a waste of time in giving input and. We know that in, in, in our positions and your positions, the, the discussion and the constant communication is what will, will get us, we can't ever, um. We may not always agree on everything, but I've always been one to try and find some kind of balance and happy medium. Maybe not happy for everybody, but I, you know, I. I think there's always a way to look into it and, and I've learned that I, I don't always make everybody happy. But I will tell you that I, I do my best to make the right decisions.
Yeah, um, I, I, you know, we can sit here and point fingers and everything. I think there's enough blame to go around, myself included. That way, I probably should have gave this a little bit more attention, uh, than, than, uh, than I did. Because, you know, the things I have given attention to seem to get addressed pretty well.
Which, what you guys are looking for is maybe a two-story building or just something.
Well, they came and briefed us.
Okay.
Their initial plan and I think it was different from what they ended up doing, right? Yeah, so.
Uh, that's what I asked them and they said they had informed, they had multiple outreaches and they even walked the area, I think it would, which I would have listened to Cordero, right? So there's, they had, from what I understood, what I was told was there's been multiple, um. Meetings and things on their part where they were trying to explain and.
Yeah, it just, I don't, like I said, I, I think this, there's. And myself, like I said, myself included, I just don't think we gave it the right amount of attention that until it was too late. Okay, or hopefully not too late, but we'll see, because they haven't broke ground yet. Yeah, so, so now, as you well know, I'm all about development. I just responsible development, right? And this is probably not a responsible development.
Okay, no, thank you for your input. I, I feel the same way about responsible development. Thank you.
Anything? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair.
Uh, Francie. And I see Danny has got something too. Let's start with you, Francie, and then we'll go to Danny.
Danny's hand was up first and I lowered my hand already.
Okay, Danny.
Yeah, just a quick comment, um, council member, and I know you had mentioned that no one reached out, but we had actually emailed you directly prior to the vote. We had testified at the committee, committee meetings and so we'd gone through the process. Uh, we also participated in the interview process for the, the cultural impact assessment and to, so to say that the community. Hadn't been, been involved in the process, hadn't, hadn't voiced concerns, hadn't reached out to you directly, I think is a false statement respectfully. Um, I appreciate that, that you're with, yeah, that you're willing to, to, yeah, that you're willing to, to listen, but, but as has already been articulated. To have it be a seven to one, um, and completely ignore all of the testimonies of the community is, yeah, is frustrating.
Thank you and I apologize, um, for adding to your frustration.
Well, just, um, take a look at it again.
Will do.
Come back and talk to us about it again.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions, comments, concerns? All right, let's move on. ACA, Claire, you've already had a lot of time, so, um, but I'm giving you a little bit more.
I even wrote something down.
Oh, okay, that's important.
Uh, quiet. The IYA Community Association, the ACA, has, as many of you on the current board, um, realize that we are, um. I think you know us more as the organizers of the IYA Community Parade and the Family Fun Fair. But, um, I wanted to let you know that we trace our history back to being established in nineteen forty-four. And one of the first acts we did was dedicate that stone outside there commemorating our World War Two heroes. Uh, that went from IYA and that was in nineteen forty-five. Um, the ACA was an active voice and a workforce as IYA transit, transitioned from a blue collar plantation town. Into the first suburb outside of Honolulu. Dormant, as many of the residents became voices through the IYA Neighborhood Board in, uh, that was created in nineteen seventy-three. It ensured the Neighborhood Board ensured the hearing of community voices through a, a different system. And, and so it, but it still was to get voices to make, help make decisions that affect our community. So we, the ACA kind of reactivated ourselves in nineteen eighty-eight in response to. Participated in the empowerment zone application that the city and county of Honolulu went through. And that incorporated, that focused in on neighborhoods that had economic, um. Needed to be economic, there were stressed and economics, uh, times and that was our Puwai Momi subdivision. Um. We participated actively in the IYA Pro City. Community survey, survey, that was a hundred twenty-two pages that was contracted by the Department of Planning and Permitting. We also participated in the IYA Pro City Level of Communities Plan. Dated May of twenty twenty-four, uh, May of two thousand and four, and that was done by the city and county of Honolulu. The IYA Pro City Neighborhood TOD Plan that went from two thousand and nine to two thousand and fourteen. The Pearl Harbor Historic Trail Plan, which was drafted in two thousand and one and adopted by the city in two thousand and three. And all of these plans, um, we've been there, kind of a voice for the community. Um, and, you know, like you said a little earlier, some of the people, when we were trying to get people's voices heard. Some of the people said the very thing you said, why should we participate in this when, whenever our input is given? It becomes part of a study that sits on a shelf and then no one has to listen. The whole person, purpose of all those plans was to provide a guideline for how IYA would go forward and develop. We weren't saying if you have a ten-story building right on the water, you had to demolish it. Said, when it comes time to repurpose a building or to re. You know, rezone a building, then you take into consideration the guidelines that were set forth by the community. And these were long-range plans. And I think some people have to remember that. The plan to close the IYA Library down at the bottom. It was going to be closed by the library system and this was all plantation, the IYA Sugar Mill Plantation. The community fought really hard to get the library put in here. To get us affordable senior housing up there. And the last piece is what we want to develop for the community and, you know, none of it. It was funny because I remember some of the conversations that went around. Someone said, well, you guys can buy it and we said, no, we're not, we're not here to buy it. We're just here to let you know what this community needs. Um, and so. We, you know, we've been lazy too, you know, we've been, we've, uh. Rested on being, not being as active. So that's just a little background of us, um, all those plans are on file either online or in the library system. So you can always revisit them. Um, on another note. We want to announce we're having a book sale with the IYA Library on March twen- sorry.
Great segue, by the way.
On March twenty ninth, um, and it'll be here in this room. Uh, we also have books for sale, um, for the IYA Pro, uh, IYA, uh, IYA Community. We have thousands of those books left, so. Anyway, any questions?
So, uh, board members, any questions for ACA? I do want to make one comment, though, about what you were just talking about. You know, there is so much going on in our community and between the ACA and the Neighborhood Board. We, I think we cover things to slip through the cracks, for example, right? But I think in general, we've got a pretty good handle on things that are happening around here and any avenue for our residents and our constituents. To voice, you know, to voice their concerns, their issues, whatever it is. I think the more is the better, right? And so as long as we're working together, which we do, we work together all the time, I think that's a benefit to the community in general.
Yeah, I, I included, I, I distributed to you people the letter I sent or my testimony regarding. The Primary Urban Core, um, Bill twenty-four and then also the, the two. the Primary Urban Core, um, Bill Twenty-four, and then also the, the two, uh, the lifting of the resolutions that lifted the SMA regulations for the building.
Yeah, and, and so, you know, I've taken what you've done, right? Um, basically fostering this partnership between ACA and the Neighborhood Board, and kind of extended that to the Pearl City folks, the Salt Lake Boards, all that, because we all talk now. Whereas in the past, that wasn't necessarily happening.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
We appreciate that, and, you know, I'm, when I was asked by fellow community members, shall we go to the meeting? You know, um, to just, to testify, I said, yeah, go, it's always easier to see a person there. I mean, Jane has been around a long time, so she was participating in a lot of these meetings.
Chief Clark as well.
Clark, way back when, and this is just a little segue, sorry, I, but when this mill was still standing, I took my ninety-three-year-old aunt, who was full of white hair, who lived right down the street there. And she went and testified at city council, and it was really interesting because she had such a dignified air about her. And because she was ninety-three years old, she said to the council members, you'll be old one day too. You know, kind of stuff. And she commanded the respect of the council, and she was applauded. But she said, change is not a bad thing, yeah? But change has to have a reason, and it has to have a purpose of why we do that. And so that stays with me, you know, um, anyway, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay, moving on. We're now hour and thirty minutes in. We haven't even got to the state, guys. Okay, so, uh, US Congressman at Casey's office. Done. Okay, all right, see Board of, or CEO Triple C getting out of here. Uh, Governor Green's office. Nope, okay, all right.
Hi, I'm here, hi.
Oh, okay, you are, there you are, hi.
Hi, General Sanishi, representing the Office of the Governor. Um, there was a question from Board Member Higa about bird flu and dead birds. It's one subject that I know about, because I am the Public Information Officer for the Department of Agriculture. So, um, if you have a dead bird, you, if it's just one bird, it's not so concerning. So you would get a double zip bag, turn it inside out and grab it. If you have gloves, use gloves, but if not, just get a bag and pull it, uh, grab it and zip it, and you can toss it in the trash. Now, if it's more concerning if there are several dead birds, and especially dead birds of different species, then you should report it to the Department of Agriculture, and they will, uh, look at it.
Would you be able to provide a link in the chat or something like that? So that people know how to do that? Okay, thank you.
And, um, yeah, so, you know, the, the bird flu has only been detected in early November at one sanctuary, bird sanctuary in Waihua, and one, one duck was found in, in North Shore. And since early November, there haven't been any further detections, although it's quite possible it's circulating. And so if you have, you know, pet birds, even, um, cats, keep them indoors, keep them away from wild birds. So that's the, and the surveillance is continuing between the state departments of health, Department of Land and Natural Resources, and Department of Agriculture, and also our federal partners, USDA and US Fish and Wildlife Service. So surveillance continues. There's also, um, the city and county of Honolulu, and some I, other islands are doing wastewater testing. And so they're testing for bird flu in, in the wastewater. So, um, so that, that's about bird flu. Unless you have any other questions about it. Also, I would just point you to the governor's February newsletter. It, uh, it's in the Google Drive and also available on the governor's website at governor.hawai.gov. He outlines his, uh, legislative initiatives, including affordable housing, reducing homelessness, targeting by twenty twenty-six to build twenty thirty Calhales, offering about fifteen hundred new housing units. And there is an article in the newsletter about the, the Amanu Fireworks tragedy that the Department of Health has sent several times their crew of behavioral specialists to help that community kind of cope with, or to provide support for, uh, what they're going through, their neighbors and family members. Well, that's about it, I can take any questions.
Hey, thank you, ma'am. Uh, board members, any questions for Governor Green's office? Uh, community members, any questions?
Oh, oh, sorry, I forgot to add that, uh, I think Board Member Higa also asked about whether the sale of American Savings, that four-hundred-million-dollar sale of, uh, American Savings is going to offset the state's portion of the Maui wildfire litigation settlement. And it looks like it's, it's not. Each of the parties have agreed to a certain amount that there's, they're, um, contributing to the four-billion-dollar litigation settlement. And the Supreme Court just upheld that this week. It goes back to the Maui courts. But, yeah, so Hiko is agreed to pay about two billion dollars, that's half of the fund. And, uh, state pays about eight seventy-five, eight hundred seventy-five thousand. And so it's community of schools, eight hundred seventy-five thousand. And, uh, Spectrum and Hawaiian Tel, Hawaiian Telecom, um, providing three hundred million combined.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, any questions for the governor's office? And thank you for that follow-up, by the way. Yeah, I forgot about that question last month. Um, okay, uh, community members, any questions?
Chair Wood?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, as far as, um, the sale of American Savings Bank, do you see involved, or was there any type of oversight as far as the sale? Because I noticed in financial reports, they said that the bank made forty million this past year. Should that be a ten percent profit? But the bank itself, that was part of, uh, Horn Electric shareholders that was able to purchase the bank. So I'm just wondering, as far as the sale, was it at the money? Or was it a good deal? And it's any way possible that the new owners of American Savings Bank be, um, I guess, publicly made available? Because I've seen a lot of articles, but nobody says who bought the bank.
Okay, um, I believe they did mention it in, in news articles, but I, I don't recall what company purchased it. Um, when I did inquire about the sale, they said it is a private sale. So it is, you know, between the bank and, or the AGI and, and the purchaser. So it wouldn't be so much, um, regulated by the state, it is a private sale.
Yeah, it's kind of funny, because they had ten, uh, people that purchased it. And because they stayed under ten percent, it's not scrutinized, I think, by the feds as far as, uh, making sure that all the monies that the bank was letting out or bringing in was legitimate. The Sony thing that I noticed that was odd, they, they bought nine point nine percent. So once it hit that ten percent threshold, they didn't, more scrutinized, I think, by the federal government. But they stayed below the ten percent, and they, everybody got nine point nine percent.
Okay, that would be a commerce issue and probably more federal, because they're federally insured banking.
Okay, Lawrence, anything else?
Thank you.
All right, uh, thank you for your report, much appreciated.
Thank you.
Good night. Um, okay, moving on to DOT. And, uh, I'm just gonna caveat before we introduce, uh, Mr. Abi. I did say he's a giant among men in an email recently, so, um, Mr. Abi, are you on?
Yes, uh, good evening, Chair Woods and members of AIA Neighborhood Board. Our KCI from State DOT Highways Division. On January twenty-eighth, Senator Alafonte informed me about the overgrowth at AIA Heights Drive Overpass on the Makai Evera side. Uh, during my field investigation this morning, I noticed the overgrowth hasn't been cut back yet. So I'm working with our maintenance crew to cutting back the overgrowth. Uh, on January twenty-eighth, I also received an email from Senator Alafonte about the overgrowth and trash near the Ka'onohe Street Overpass on the Makai Evera Corner. During my January thirty-first field inspection, the trash was removed. And during my field inspection last Friday, the overgrowth was cut back. But I noticed the graffiti artists left their marks, so I'll be working with our maintenance crew to remove and paint over their graffiti. Also, on Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, I received an email from Senator Alafonte about a homeless encampment along Kuleana Road adjacent to Honolulu Road, near the Border Water Supply Station and Times Supermarket. During my field inspection last Friday, I noticed that the homeless encampment had moved out, but left their trash behind, so I'll be working with our maintenance crew to clean up their trash. I also noticed a graffiti and broken fence along Kuleana Road, so I'll be working our maintenance crew on addressing these concerns. At last month's meeting, I mentioned I received an email on November thirteen from Tricia Repelley from Councilmember Cordero's office, where a constituent expressed his concern about Uluuni Street on ramp onto the one where Freeway Westbound. During the January's meeting, a board member mentioned that we should not move the yield sign where we would have motor some Halava Industrial Park yield, because traffic would back up into the intersection. After talking to our traffic branch, the board member was correct. We will keep the yield sign where it is and just cut down the bushes and trim the trees to provide a better sight distance for motors coming from AIA and Halava Heights Road. During my field inspection last Friday, our maintenance crew had cut the overgrowth and trimmed the trees in the meeting area. Unfortunately, due to manpower shortage, they did not cut the overgrowth on the shorter area. Also, at last month's meeting, I mentioned, I received an email from Senator Alafonte, where a constituent is requesting a speed home installed at, uh, along Halava Heights Road at Ke'ala Uluuni, uh, Drive. Talking to traffic branch, um, or traffic bands, the area was previously evaluated, but due to the steep grade and the super elevation curve, installing a speed home was not recommended. We already have an existing speed home and speed radar approximately one quarter mile up the road. So our traffic bank is proposing to install additional reflective flexible delineer posts that will provide a slightly longer narrowing of the paved roadway for the vehicles to travel, hoping that motors will slow down when approaching this narrow strip of roadway. So if there's no objections or comments from the board or community, we will be installing these effective, uh, flexible delineer posts. On Tuesday, February fifth, I received an email from Tricia Repelley from Councilmember Cordero's office concerning pottos on Honolulu Road between Kamakani Street and AIA Access Road. During my field inspection this morning, I noticed a maintenance crew did patch some of the pottos, but I will work with them on patching the other potholes that they may have missed. On Monday, uh, February third, I received an email from Chair Woods about pottos and a fallen tree on Alpeli Drive near Salt Lake Boulevard under H1 Freeway Overpass, which is close to our Salt Lake Field Office. During my field inspection last Friday, our maintenance crew were able to cut back the overgrowth and pass pottos. And I want to thank Senator Alafonte for helping the highways division when a constituent had a concern about an abandoned car along Haleikoni Place next to the pedestrian overpass at the back entrance to Alva Scott Elementary School. Since the highways division does not have the resources to address abandoned cars, we normally work with HPD and the city motor vehicle office to issue a citation and eventually tow the car away. Senator Alafonte, uh, con- contact HPD who investigate and issue a citation. During the follow-up, the car was moved onto a private property, so thank you, Senator Alafonte. And finally, at the January's meeting, a community member expressed her concern with excessive noise coming from cars, motorcycles, and mopeds. At the twenty twenty-three legislature session, passed our Senate Bill Five Eighty-Eight relating to excessive noise. The law provided two and a half million dollars and required the state highways division to implement a pilot program to use noise detection cameras to address excessive traffic noise in urban areas with a population greater than five hundred thousand people. This slide shows the ten locations in the Honolulu and Kano district selected by the state highways with input from the state Department of Health and City and County Honolulu and a private engineering consulting firm who is assisting us with implementing this pilot program. Initially, we identified twelve locations, but due to the funding limitation, we reduced the locations to ten. The four locations, one, two, three, and ten are within state jurisdiction, while the remaining six locations are within the city's jurisdiction. This pilot program will not issue any citations like our red light program. This program is to study the technical aspects of implementing these noise cameras and see if the data collected would stand up if, in court, if DOT, with support from the public and elected officials, decide to move forward with issuing citations in the future. Project has been advertised, and we are in the process of awarding the contract. I will update the project, um, at a future meeting. This concludes my report, I can take any questions at this time.
All right, board members, any questions for DOT? Community members, any questions for DOT? Okay, as always, Mr. Abi, you're an amazing man, I really appreciate everything you do, so thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Senator Wakai's office. Yep. I do want to say he was at the, um, first stadium meeting that the developers had with us. So, so even though he's might, maybe not here, he's definitely engaged on a whole bunch of other things. Uh, Senator Alafonte's office. Okay.
Hi, everyone. Uh, aloha and good evening, Chair Wood, Vice Chair Mizusawa, members of the board and the community. My name is Faith Kintua, I'm here on behalf of Senator Brandon Alafonte, and he just wanted me to share with all of you that he regrets not being here this evening, but that he's provided our monthly report, and I just shared the link to it in the chat. Following up on Board Member Paul Glenn's question last month regarding the updates on AIA High School Athletic Field and Track, the Department of Education and AIA High School provided us with this update. The tentative start date for the construction of the field and track is November twenty twenty-five. They have already surveyed the existing field and general area. I'll stand on my written, or the written, report and be happy to take back any questions. This concludes my report, thank you so much for having me here and for your time.
All right, uh, board members, any questions for Senator Alafonte's office? Community members, any questions for Senator Alafonte's office? All right, so this is another individual that has been working the Catholic Charities and the Royal Summit residence, along with, um, Councilmember Okamoto, myself. So, um, I don't know where he finds the time in the day, honestly, right? I mean, he's everywhere, every time, everywhere, so, except for here tonight, right? He's everywhere else, um, so thank you, you know, pass on to the senator, thank you for his service, and, um, much appreciated for everything he's been doing. Okay, with that, let's move on. Representative Ichiyama's office.
Aloha.
Oh, there she is. Hi, I saw you over there, I was like, where'd she go?
Aloha, Chair Wood, members of the board, members of the community, Shonda Delasurias for Representative Vinnie Ichiyama's office. I want to direct you folks to our February community updates. Towards the top, you can see a little blurb from Rep. Ichiyama. As you all are aware, the legislative session has begun. Uh, just a gentle reminder, I'm sure you folks are, um, very familiar with the Capitol website, but for neighbors and residents of the AIA community, um, just a reminder, you're able to track bills, submit testimony, and even view public hearings through the website. Towards the bottom, we do have January highlights. You can see Rep. Ichiyama at the Women's Legislative Caucus on the left and on the right. She's with members of the House leadership. I want to apologize for not being able to give a report last month, but, uh, for everybody's information, um, again, I'm sure you folks are aware, but Rep. Ichiyama, um, with the votes of her fellow House members, is now Vice Speaker of the House. She is also serving as one of the four co-conveners of the Women's Legislative Caucus. And in terms of committee placements, we have, um, public safety, uh, legislative management, uh, water and land, and, uh, consumer protection and commerce. And towards the back, we have, uh, very quickly, just some events at the Salt Lake Honolulu Library. Towards the bottom, uh, I want to bring your attention to an AARP Foundation Tax Aid Event. So this is open to people of all ages, um, even if you are not an AARP member. Uh, there are instructions on the left to make appointments, uh, so that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you.
For report.
All right, board members, any questions for the representative's office? Okay.
Chair Wood?
Yes, go ahead, Francie.
Um, hi, I was, um, following the, there was a joint, uh, committee meeting. there was a joint, uh, committee meeting, I think it was yesterday, um, about midwifery. There was two bills and in the end, um, I think it was HB one one nine four. They amend, made a whole bunch of amendments, and then they voted, um, to move that one forward with the amendments, and then they just kind of killed the other bill. I think it was one three, HB one three two eight. I might be wrong on that number, but anyways, um, I was wondering if you have any information as to, um, what those amendments were, because it was really hard to follow right? All the amendments that they did so fast and, um, understand what the difference was between the HB one one nine four with the amendments as opposed to one three two eight, which everybody, a lot of the testifiers were, um, in support of one three two eight of that version. That was the way it was written as opposed to one one nine four.
Thank you, Francine. Um, so I was also tracking the hearing. Um, I believe I heard one of the members on CPC say that they also couldn't track it, so your, um, comment is well noted. Um, I don't have the list of amendments in front of me right now. Um, I think we do have your email and your contact, but I'm going to double check after this meeting, um, if you would like a little breakdown of all the amendments.
Um, yeah, I did. I had wanted to email her, but I didn't get to it yesterday. Um, but, um, my main concern, which I'll, I'll hopefully try and get an email to her, but, um, my main concern was, um, the constitutionality of the two bills and one three two eight, the way everybody was testifying, um, was okay with it. It protected, it seemed to have protect, um, people's right to choose for themselves. Um, whereas, um, one one nine four, there was something in it that alluded to, um, an attack on Hawaiians and cultural protect, um, cultural practitioners. And so that was my concern in trying to understand the two different bills.
Um, just off the top of my head, if I can answer you, Francine, I do remember Chair Takayama including an amendment that exempted Native Hawaiian practitioners. Um, but just to make sure we're more comprehensive with your concern, if you could email us, that would be very helpful. I assist with pretty much the majority of our constituent concerns, especially the ones that pertain to House and Senate bills. Um, I'm sure you have Rep. Ichiyama's email. But if you could do that, I'd, I'd be able to see your email and respond more thoroughly to it.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Francie, when you do that, does he see me on that email, please? So I'm aware.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Board members, any other questions? Okay.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. Okay, uh, moving on to, um, Representative Shimizu.
Aloha, board. This is, I'm Carol Koppu. I'm Rep. Shimizu's office manager, and, um, I'm just here because it's been a very busy, busy, busy session um, for Rep. Shimizu as he's getting used to this new position. And, um, he's on a couple of committees that are very, very busy at this point. One is Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs. And so, um, when I left the office today, he was still there, still in committee. Anyway, um, so basically, almost everything that we were going to talk about has already been talked about by different folks. Um, he's, some of the bills there that are still alive and active and are, um, working their way through the legislature are fireworks, dealing with fireworks, um, sports betting is coming up, sports wagering, and, um, it looked like legalizing of, uh, cannabis was dead, but the Senate has brought it back to life on their side, so we'll see what happens with that. And so there's a lot going on, and, um, if you have any questions, please contact our office, and I put our newsletter in, link to the newsletter in our chat, in the chat, and there's also a link to a survey there for us also. If you have any questions.
Board members, any questions for the rep's office? Okay, uh, I just want to extend my appreciation to, uh, uh, Representative Shimizu for showing up at like the stadium, um, meetings and things like that. So, so I saw him down there when, when I was attending. Um, okay. Uh, community members, any questions for the rep's office? I don't see anything, nothing. Okay, good. All right, thank you, ma'am, for your, uh, quick report. It's always appreciated. So. Okay, um, Representative Kong's office. Nothing. So, board, I know he hasn't been here for a while or any representatives, but he was at the association meeting for Royal Summit and was trying to assist in that situation as well. Okay, I just want to pass that along. Okay, with that, we are now moving to community concerns, and I know there's, there's a few community members here, so, uh, we'll start with raising up hands. If anybody's got anything they want to bring up to the board, please do so now. What, community concerns from residents? You know, but there are community members just like anybody that have any concerns. Right. Okay, okay. Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Curtis. Okay, um, let's move on to board business then. I don't see any, uh, hands. All right, uh, three absent latter for board member Chemo Burgess and a motion to declare the seat vacant. All right, Chemo's been out for a while, guys. I, I don't know how you guys want to do this. Do we want to go ahead and make a motion to vacate that seat and see if somebody else wants to run for it? We do have another open seat already. Nobody's, and that's an at-large seat, right? Oh, we do. Oh, okay. Oh, for that large. Okay, so we'll get to that in a second then. Um, okay, but, okay, so we do have somebody for that, but what do you guys want to do with this? Um, do you want to have a discussion room? Do we have to do a motion to discuss? Okay, yeah, let's go straight into discussion on this. So, any thoughts, anybody?
With, with an upcoming election, I think it's not, not really important to fill it before the next election.
Okay, okay. Anybody else?
I concur.
You concur? Okay, all right. No motion? Yeah, so, so we'll let it continue until election time? Yep, okay, all right. Okay, moving on. Uh, filling a vacant at-large board seat. So you, there's somebody? Oh, ma'am, come on up. Okay, so, I, I'll have to tell you how this goes. Yeah, thank you, thank you. So, um, we usually ask somebody to just kind of give us an idea who you are. First, you got to verify where they live, right, Curtis? She's good. Okay, okay. So just, if you want, if you don't want to say anything, that's fine. If you want to say something, please do so. Now's your time.
Well, thank you. I was hoping if, uh, the board would consider me as a member. I was born and raised in Aia for the past, living here for the past, oh, fifty years. And I am familiar with the Aia board as I used to staff Senator Benet Missalucha to buy a board meeting, and I used to attend Claire's meeting as well. So it's nice to be back and, uh...
I keep in touch with the Senator, by the way, all the time. So, I think her and I went out for coffee a few months ago. Yeah, she's doing great. Okay, all right, uh, board members, any questions for her? No? Okay, do we want to make a motion to vote her onto the board?
So moved.
What's that?
I, I moved to have her.
I second.
Yeah.
Okay, second, okay. Uh, anybody object to Bernie being voted onto the neighborhood board? Yeah, what's your last name, ma'am?
My full name is Bernie Ka'alan.
Ka'alan, okay. Anybody have any objections to Bernie Ka'alan being voted onto the board? No objections heard? Ma'am, you're on the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, now you can sit. Since he bailed out like an hour ago, so. All right, now we're a full board again. Okay. Oh, yeah, she has to do an oath.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we can do a five-minute recess. Future, no talking when they're doing their oaths, okay? All right? Okay, thank you. Okay, welcome to the board, by the way. Okay, let's move on. Uh, report findings and discussions on Catholic Charities facility located Royal Summit. This is my turn to talk. All right, here we go. So, uh, there was a two-hour meeting conducted on the eighteenth January, uh, with the residents surrounding this, uh, charity and where they're located at. And then on thirty January, there was a two-hour meeting conducted with Catholic Charities in the facility itself. Um, and then, um, I did, I went down and talked to their previous neighbors in Nu'au'nu on zero one February, um, and canvassed the neighborhood down there to find, you know, the historicals of their situation and how they were. So, uh, the attendees at the, uh, pretty much at all the meetings, actually, except for the Nu'au', I was there by myself on that one, was, um, Councilmember Okimoto and her staff. Uh, Francie was there, uh, along with myself, Division Administrator, uh, Sarah Anton, and various members of the residents here at Royal Summit, and along with, um, uh, Catholic Charity staff. So, agenda was Q and A, residents' concerns, discuss ways to mitigate those concerns. Um, there was a series of questions, which I think I've sent you guys all the MFR, so you've had the time to review that. I'm not going to go into every one of those questions. Curtis, how do I get that to the public note minutes? Okay, I think I did. So just take a look and then make sure those get into the public minutes. Okay, thank you. All right, so I'm going to move through these que, I'm not going to go through every one of these questions, because, um, you guys have all can read. Um, so what I want to talk about is a couple of things. Um, I'm not going to talk about the observations either. What I really kind of just want to hit on, uh, today is the do-outs, okay? So we have several do-outs. Um, one of the concerns that the residents have brought up is, um, is, uh, the fencing around the property. It's, um, it's like an iron rot fencing. It's rusting. It's, uh, it doesn't provide any privacy whatsoever. So, um, I've given, um, uh, Catholic Charities, uh, the due date of zero one May to provide me three estimates. Uh, I'm going to try to help them secure donations and funding to, to do that fencing. Um, and the, I'll be talking to various businesses around the community to see if they're willing to do that, okay? So I'm working in conjunction with them to do that. Uh, another do-out was the gate. The gate is listed in the back of the house. Move that up more towards the front of the house, uh, so that, um, it reduces the egress points, uh, for the, um, minors to, to leave the property. Okay, and that's another thing that will cost money, so we'll be looking for ways to fund that. But that, those quotes are again due on May first. Uh, so reposition the security cameras. That's due, uh, zero one March, so within this month. I think Catholic Charities has resolved that with the, with the security camera company, um, because the cameras were pointed, uh, to some degree into the neighbors' yards, which is actually illegal. So they need to actually move those so that it points more into their, their locations. Security clips on the jealousy windows, this is something I recommended to, so that can reduce the way, you can't pull out the security windows. You can still break them. So if there's an emergency, you can literally break those and get through, but you cannot remove them as easily. Um, with these security clips, um, it's actually to prevent people from getting inside, not necessarily from people leaving the property. But it works both ways, honestly. I have them in mine. And, uh, they looked, uh, they talked to fire inspector. Fire inspector said, yeah, that's not a problem. We will authorize it. So I think they're actually doing that. Um, and as we speak, uh, frosting windows. So there are, there are some windows that have line of sight to bedroom windows on the opposite sides of the property, and they are going to frost those to ensure that, uh, there's privacy both ways from those windows coming into their property, along with, um, viewing, uh, from inside that property to those bedroom windows. Those, you know, there's, there's children that live in those actual bedrooms, and they want to make sure that they have some privacy there. And, uh, Catholic Charities has agreed to go ahead and frost those windows, um, to, to reduce the line of sight. Okay, so, um, next steps, uh, the association needs to approve the fencing and gate. I did talk to the association before I left. I did attend their, one of their association meetings, um, which is run a little differently than ours, just to say the least. Um, and so, um, but, um, but I did talk to them, and I said, if you guys have like restrictions on, on what type of fencing and things like that, probably need to waiver this one, you know, um, you know, because the privacy and reducing the, the egress points in that property is probably the biggest things that you need to address. Um, okay, so they're, they're going to provide me quotes. Fire inspector, we already talked about verification of cameras, we talked about, which I still need the verifications that you guys moved those cameras and the verifications that the line of sight issues have been done. Okay, so there have been, uh, late yesterday, I received, um, an amendment to, uh, this, this memo that I put out, uh, with a fault, with a series of follow-up questions. There's twelve of them, I think. Um, so come, I was going to ask them to come back in March to talk about the, the March do-outs, but they're already addressing those, so, um, I'm going to have them come back in May, and then that's when we're going to address the rest of the follow-ups, the fencing, the gate, those kind of things. But in between that time, I'm anticipating more questions from that community, and as I get more of those questions, I'm going to put all those together and then, uh, update my, my memorandum for record or report or whatever you want to call it, uh, to, so that we can ensure that all these questions, all the answers are, uh, captured in the public record. So nobody can misunderstand or misconstrue, or ten years down the line say that wasn't said. Okay, so that's, that's where I'm going with this. Um, right now, I've asked both parties not to provide any questions and answers outside of this board. So if you members have any questions for Catholic communities or the residents, I would please, please ask those questions now. Okay, so I can include them later on in these amendments, okay? Go ahead, May. To who? To who? May, may, may. Who's the, who, who are you asking the question to? Okay, okay, okay.
Microphone, please.
Because you talk about this house, I'm really concerned, because where I lived in Manana, there was a house across my street who was, uh, you know, it's different. How do you call that? Corrective home or something? But I had no problems because they were quiet and there were few, and there were young children. Now, in this Royal Summit, I don't have the background information. Can you give the address? Would you like us to see it?
So we've already done a tour. Myself and Francie went.
And that's enough?
Yeah, well, hold on. If, if you're requesting another, another tour, we'll work with Catholic charities and see if they're willing to do that.
But I'm willing to see the place, you know, you know, I think we have, don't we think we have a right to see what's being discussed?
Well, they offered that already, and we, we took them up on that offer.
Oh.
But, but, uh, if you, I can work with them and see if they're willing to go ahead and do another tour if you guys are interested in.
Because I like to see how people, you know, live. I've lived in a community and, well, I didn't have problems.
Okay, let me talk to them and see if, um, if they're willing to do that.
Because I lived across the house and I didn't see anything, so, and they left early. Yeah, so, you know.
So another tour. Okay, got it.
Anybody else wants to go? You don't care to see?
No, I, I, I just wanted to, uh, applaud Chair Wood and all the other people.
Yeah, I agree with that.
For doing that, for, and also for your very thorough memorandum, uh, you know, all the questions and answers there, all the action items. Um, not, not to guess up to you, but that's outstanding work.
Yeah, and then the residents that came to this meeting, they had questions.
Jane?
What kind of facility is, um, is being? Uh, what is this? Is it like a rental or?
Well, hold on. Uh, Sarah, you want to answer that real quick?
And if so, how many people are going to be living there? Are families?
My report, but, but let, let Sarah answer. She might not have forgotten.
When did you, when did you study?
Uh, week ago, maybe? I have, I have an old address for you or something.
Yeah, I have a crap of a wish. Let me write it and I'll.
Yeah, write it down, and I'll send you. February third. Hold on, hold on, sir. Thank you. I was about to get to that. Okay, yeah. All right, pass it out. I already passed it out. Yeah. Uh, I did take some pictures, um, but, um, which I didn't include, uh, outside of the cameras, because the other visual pictures are actually the other owner's property and how they see this property. So I didn't want that to be in the public record. So, um, how about, hey Jane, give me the correct email address for you, and I'll make sure you get that report, and then in May, we can revisit. Okay? Uh, any other questions? Okay, so, uh, as the gentleman over here was.
Chair, my hand is up.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
I did not receive the report and I request the report emailed to me.
Okay, okay.
Okay, it sounds as though you've made up your mind that this house or facility is going to be done as a done deal in the community, is that right? Because my, my question is how mu-.
Hold on, Russell.
Has there been a poll, has there been a poll of the owners? That say within a mile of this facility, and whether they approve or disapprove, I mean, what is the numbers turning out to be in this?
Yeah, so, um, then, so what's happened is, is that Catholic Charities, um, received, so they're a state funded, uh, operation or facility, and because they're state.
It's a nonprofit, it's a private nonprofit.
They're private nonprofit.
Yeah, 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 but they're state funded.
Church. Catholic church.
Yeah. Yeah, so this particular facility is, is run by nonprofit, but they're funded by the state, correct? Yes, that's what, that's what I was, yeah. Okay, so, so because of that, they didn't have to go through DPP to get approval for this, because DPP is a city, not a state. Activity, so.
And so the answer is the owners have not been polled.
That is correct. And why is because they don't need to be, based on the state rules associated with this. Hold on, Claire.
So you're, but, but don't you think the owners around the facility?
Oh, absolutely, one hundred percent. Absolutely, one hundred percent. So when, when, when the owners came here, uh, two me- two meetings ago, one month ago, yeah, we were all shocked, because we under the assumption that DPP would have notified us, because that's what they do. Since this is a state thing, they didn't have to do it.
With that also, Chair.
And, and so, so we're working with Alefante right now to get that changed, but that doesn't impact this particular effort at this moment.
Chair Wood.
Yeah. Yes, go ahead, Francie.
Um, wasn't it also because their, um, number of residents, um, or participants wasn't high number?
Right, so, so they don't have to report anything above eight?
I think it was five.
Five to eight, yeah.
Five or.
And so, so they're under that number, so that's another reason why they don't have to report. Yes, twelve to seventeen. And so, um.
That's their age.
So Russell, I, I, let me.
Okay, but we all know of that now, so the question I have is, are we, or the Catholic charities or anyone, inquiring from the neighbors of what they think about having the facility next door?
Well, that's me, um, that's what I've done, so, so, uh.
Okay.
If you didn't get my report, I'll send, I'll make sure I got your email address, and I'll send it to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, Chair Wood.
Can you make sure that it gets emailed to everyone? Okay.
Chair Wood?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, can I look up Catholic charities? It says that it's a NGO, non-governmental organization.
That is correct.
But those are not, uh, it's funded by state and federal.
Correct.
So they're getting federal money also, not just state money.
Right.
Okay, so as far as all the, um, I guess those, uh, boys that are between twelve and seventeen, are they all local?
Yes.
Citizens or from, are they from out of state?
Uh, yes.
I believe it's all local.
Across Hawaii.
And do they have like birth, birth certificates of everybody staying there?
You guys received their birth certificates?
Why?
Yeah, you have the, like, they're state residents and that kind of thing. Okay. Lawrence, anything else?
I can't hear the, the person speaking, they don't have the mic.
Yeah, somebody's got their mic on. Okay, okay, anything else, Lawrence?
So they have birth certificates or they do not have birth?
They do, they have identification documents, is what we're told.
And they're all from Hawaii?
All from Hawaii.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, back to you, hold on, hold on, back to you, Russell, and, and you have anything else you want to add?
No, I, I look forward to your report, and I'm interested in what, uh, the neighbors think.
Yeah, I have it in there, I have it in the report.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah, we have three friends that live up there, yes, thank you.
Yes. Yes. And over, and, and it's overwhelming, by the way, like, I attended their association meeting, and it was overwhelming that they did not want the facility in their location.
What was just said, I didn't hear what?
Oh, so I attended their, I attended their association meeting, and, uh, it was overwhelmingly expressed that they did not want this facility in their neighborhood.
Was that because they had a misunderstanding of what the facility is about?
I, I think it's a little bit of that, but also I just, I think it's also, I mean, no offense, guys, but I think there's a little bit of fear of the unknown as well.
Yeah, that was one thing that I kind of picked up right away, um, was the misunderstanding of what the program is about.
Yeah. Um, so what I can't tell you is, when I went down to Nu'au'nu', uh, I, I actually talked with neighbors down there that had been there for twenty years. Um, they express, uh, that there was maybe a handful of incidents in that twenty years, but nothing that impacted the neighborhood, um, outs, you know, at all. Uh, there was, uh, two individuals that, um, didn't run away, I wouldn't say run away, I say they just walked out the door. Um, and then, um, uh, you know, staff followed them until they're out of the neighborhood. Um, and then, um, so, so, uh, and then there was like some incidents of just, you know, loud noises, right? You know, the kids yelling or crying, or, uh, something like that, you know? Um, but that kind of stopped about five years ago, from what those neighbors were telling me, when, um, the new, uh, live in director, if you read my report, there's a live in, uh, manager, he's a retired Army Colonel, and, um, when he came on board, that kind of all just stopped at that point. He really kind of righted the ship, it seemed like, so, um, uh, but yeah, yeah. There was another incident with a laser pointer, and that got addressed immediately when the neighbor went over and said, please don't have those kids point laser pointers in our yard. So that was it, in twenty years. So, yeah, go ahead.
I know Royal Summit.
Microphone, please.
As I know, Royal Summit is supposed to be a elite, you know, kind of wealthy group, and I can feel for them, because they're not up sort of like standards in their relationship. Have you talked to the neighbors directly across these?
Oh, I've, I've talked to.
Or their statements, do they accept it or not?
No.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
They're going to have a hard time living in that kind of situation. The people that I know in Royal Summit, they have passed Milili, uh, Momilani and stepped up and up, and they consider themselves kind of, you know, can have nice things and, you know, live in a comfortable environment, as I understand it. And I would be a little upset, not, I don't know how, who they are, but in my case, they were across the street, so it didn't bother me, the neighbors on the side, side, the back, and directly in front. But I, you know, and they were younger kids, so we had no, you know, concern about them, but could they come back here to our, uh, would that not be necessary since, you know, because you said it's already approved, this.
So they get, so, so going back to.
Anything we can do already?
So going back to what the gentleman about to talk about.
It's passed, it's.
Everything is passed except for one thing, right? Which I don't think they have done it yet.
What?
I might stand corrected, but, uh, in your, I pass this out to all you folks, uh, this Hawaii State Health Planning and Development Agency, the Certificate of Need Program. So please read through this, I did ask Chair Clark to read through it before he left, I don't think I gave you.
I was on a trip long, long.
Joe, this just got handed this today, one of the residents. And so in this is their application for the need for that facility.
Yeah, I know the need, but the place, choice.
I know, but take a read at this, because a lot of that information is in here.
It's a hard thing for me to, I mean, you know, I have my preferences.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So I'll go with the majority, but, yeah.
I think the, I think the, there's, the problem really kind of resides with how the state handles this kind of things, because we got DPP pretty locked in. We can, we can issue, we can, we can tie certain conditions to the DPP permit, and if they fail those conditions, then they get their permit revoked.
Yeah.
The state was, there, I wouldn't say it was a loophole, it was, I would call it more like a gap. And, and they just didn't, it was a gap that needed to be filled, basically, because, because we need to be able to have some kind of enforcement action if Catholic Charities doesn't uphold their end of the bargain.
Is that why nobody from Rosi, they have?
Yeah, they're all right, they're all here from Royal Summit. They're all.
Have a say here?
Yeah, yeah, they came last month and had a say.
Do they have a say now?
No.
Why?
Hold on. The reason why is because this is only for you folks, and it's my report to you and your questions to them. Now, if you have a question for them and you want to ask them a question, that's your prerogative.
But it would be useless for one person, I would like the board, and since they're here, I think, you know, to be fair, they should have a voice too, because.
And they do, and I've put that in that report, and next, and in May, when we revisit this, they'll have another voice then.
I thought this was real world.
But I, I, I have specifically stated, because what I don't want to have happen is a situation what happened at their association meeting. Um, I don't want, I want, this is an opportunity for my board to ask the questions that concern them, and they provide those answers to us.
Okay, but nobody wants to be railroaded into, say, you got to accept.
No, I totally agree with you, May. Absolutely.
Could you let him talk?
And, and, and Chair.
Can you ask him a question?
I'll ask you a question, sir, because I'm the only one speaking, nobody supports you, but, go ahead. Go, go to the mic. You raise your hand.
Stan, um, people are saying that this is a done deal, but don't we have to finish this certificate of need, and there's a public hearing? So, um, I don't know, I don't understand what the misunderstanding is, I mean, I understand it, my wife understands it, we had to study it to understand it, okay? And number two, um, Nu'u'au'nu', I canvassed it, I walked it. The, the owner owns like four properties, I'm not even sure which house you're talking about.
It was the front one, sir.
So there's two neighbors, and one is what, twenty-five feet away?
Mm-hmm.
The other one is fifty. So.
Two driveways.
Two driveways, so a little bit different. Also, the, the front house, there's also another back house. Were they living in that back house or the front house? So the, the owners of that lot, not for the complaint, they're not going to play, does they own it? I don't know how they get paid or whatever, but they own that big, big property. That's what I want to say, the state.
Okay.
I don't know if there's a misunderstanding, I know, I know what's happening.
Yeah, I don't think this is a done deal either, I mean, they, um, they have to get through the Certificate of Need Program. I mean, that's really kind of the last step. And, um.
You get a appeal.
Yeah. Yeah.
And one, one last thing, uh, regarding the property you looked at, my neighbor, he can't be here because he's elderly, but he thought there was going to be a fence on his side, same with the, um, property on the right.
Well, that, that's funny, because when I asked him about the fence, he said it wasn't too, such a big concern for him, so.
You talk to him again, because.
Yeah, maybe he changes mind. Yeah. Yeah, because he was saying that because of the shrubbery, the fence wasn't so big of a concern for him, it was the positioning of the cameras and he was uncomfortable with those.
Well, when I talk to him and.
Okay. Yeah, we can add that, we can add that in there. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, go ahead.
The lady wants to talk, I give her.
Okay, okay, we're, I'm going to allow you one more after this, okay? Okay, okay, all right, all right.
I would encourage all of you to please, please read the Certificate of Need, because what it does, it details exactly what Catholic Charities will be opening up in this residential area. I do agree with the services that Catholic Charities provide, however, I do not think that selecting this house is appropriate, because surrounding this home that they selected resides children, girls, minors, around the house and across the street. To me, it wasn't, uh, it was, it wasn't good judgment for Catholic Charities to pick this house, this house does not have a yard, so the boys at their house here cannot go out and play in the yard, they're going to be, seems like mostly confined in the house. They have to be homeschooled, they, they don't go to regular school, everything is provided inside this house. Okay? Just let me read you just briefly, please bear with me.
Well, hold on, before we get into that, um, while you're looking that up, so if you look at my memo, it, it's in there, and it addresses all this. I know you were, I know, you went to Dubai.
Okay, but one thing that I think, um, is good to know, is this facility will ha- house a highly structured therapeutic treatment program that operates as Hawaii's second highest level of care for adolescents, just below hospitalization. It is specifically designed for adolescent males, ages twelve to seventeen, who face behavioral and emotional challenges, such as sexually reactive behavior, aggression, and other deviant behaviors. Further down, it says this approach allows youth to continue their education, develop essential life skills, and receive targeted therapeutic support to receive the risks they pose to themselves and to the, to the community. Okay, it says, "The shortage is combined by limited options for youths facing issues such as aggression, sexually reactive behaviors, and other deviant behaviors." As the pro, this is the only program in Hawaii, offering this level of care. The program provides a unique community-based therapeutic alternative to inpatient care and institutionalization. It offers a structured environment for at-risk youths who might otherwise face institu- institutionalization or be placed on lengthy wait lists for more intensive services. Okay, so Sarah will tell you.
No, 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 no. That's not what we're here to do today. You've answered her question. Okay?
That's why they chose a highly rated community like Royal Summit.
Well, hold on, you have the person you can ask.
Microphone, please. May?
May?
Phone.
Phone, microphone. Go ahead.
Oh, oh, I was talking to you. Um, why they chose a highly rated community, like Royal Summit, in this area, I A O, which is considered, you know, high income, you know, relevantly, you know, rich people, but aren't there any other places outside of, you know, have they considered, like, not in my backyard, you know, because the, the influence they will have on the, like, girls are there, and confined in one unit, and the person who sold that lot to, this buy the girl, uh, that house? The girls, who owns that house that they're living? Are they paying rent?
No, so Catholic Charities owns, owns it.
So they spent, they spent big money to pay for that house. Cannot that be somewhere else where the clientele around the surroundings would be more acceptable to that kind of, you know, development, because I would be concerned by her children.
Well, so, it's, it's a funny thing, because I was at their association meeting, right? And I'm listening to them talk about how great their community is.
Yeah.
Right? So why wouldn't I want to put a facility like this in such a great community if all the community is saying how great their community is, right? And I'm like, kind of, I don't understand that, because if they say that.
Yeah.
We've raised great kids here, we have a great community, which we do.
Different kind of children, yeah. You notice this said, uh, you know, in, almost in cast, you know, I don't know what you said.
I don't know about you, but I believe every child can be.
Yeah, I, I like that, but I, I just know that people that live there kind of would be upset, you know what I mean? Not in my backyard or something else, but, you know, there are other places, can you consider other places?
I don't think so, no, they bought that place, so I think they're there.
That's, you said like Done Deagle already, you know?
For, for them being owners of that place, absolutely, one hundred percent Done Deul.
You, okay, you.
Okay, okay, May, you're good.
I finished.
Okay, okay, all right. All right, Russell, what you got?
I'm gonna just say that, you know, even, even if you may, you may say that the state funds it and therefore legally there may not be a remedy for the neighborhood board right now. I think if the neighborhood board is responsive to the community concerns, it could also, it could simply pass something like a resolution expressing its dissatisfaction of the location here, you know, and, and considering the neighbors are, as I, as I understand it, Chair, you indicated it was overwhelmingly.
It was.
Not here. And they were not even given the opportunity to even opine on it prior to the close of the sale. And I think that's, that's really the check Catholic, the buyer, Catholic Charities issue with the neighbors. And they're gonna be, you know, in a neighborhood where they're dis- unwanted. And so I don't know if that's a good situation for their operation, but there's always, you know, I think we can still express our dissatisfaction if that's where we want to go at some point in time. I don't know when is going to be the appropriate meeting you mentioned, it's gonna come up again in the next meeting, I, I think it, I mean, or.
Well, at any point, you guys want to bring up a resolution, one way or the other? Just make sure that I can get it on the agenda. If you want to do that next month, we can do that.
Is this coming up, is something coming up next month on this?
No, we'll, we'll bring it back up in May on our May meeting when the do-outs are done. But, again, again, we're gonna talk about it in March, yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Is this facility operating, are there people living there now?
Yes.
So they have?
They have twenty-four-seven in care, there's a, basically a house manager lives there twenty-four-seven.
And they have five?
They have up to five.
Up to five.
Normally what they told us was there'll be around three children in that facility at any given time.
And it sounds like they're males.
All males, no females.
Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't think they have any children there yet.
Yeah, they don't have any children there yet.
Only the staff, only the staff are on the site right now.
Certificate of Need approved before they can actually put children in that facility.
And so what do they have to do to comply with the certificate of need?
You'll have to read that. I mean, they had a doctor show up at the, the doctor who's like on the board that approves these was at that association meeting. And there's like levels of, different levels of criteria. Mostly, it, even though the doctor said that they do take community concerns into consideration when they do these need, these, you know.
So how many adults?
They're really looking at the actual program itself related to what they're doing, like, you know.
Okay, and, and, and the adults that are there? Are they like caregivers or teachers?
Yeah, so it's a mix. It's, it, the ones that live in there are, are, the house manager is responsible for up to six staff that will be monitoring the kids twenty-four-seven. And then there's a certified therapist, who's another house manager, who will periodically go there. And then once a week, there will be a therapist that comes in, once a month, roughly a psychiatrist.
So how many adults are in the house on a twenty, twenty-four hour basis?
Right, so on a twenty-four hour basis, my understanding is that there will be roughly around eight adults in that house.
Eight adults and five children?
Hold on, don't, 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 because they gotta do shifts. So you're at, you're saying in that house in a twenty-four hour period, there will be eight adults in that house at some point. Now, at any given time, there will be roughly four adults in that house.
And five children.
And, and roughly five children, up to five children. You guys gotta let me finish. So, so basically, because what'll happen is, is there's be six staff doing a rotation of a twenty-four hour period, right? And then the house manager will be filling in gaps when those guys go on vacation or whatnot. House manager also has a wife who lives there as well. And so she'll be in the residence too. They have five bedrooms. Well, there's five kids, five bedrooms. Right, so, so the five bedrooms are upstairs and then there's a residential area below where the resident, where the house manager will be living with his wife. And then there, in the back area, there's an office area back there for staff to, they actually have like a couple desks back there. There's like a storage closet back there. The, the cameras for all the security, or, or the screens for all the security cameras are back there. And it's under lock and key. So there's actually two points to get into that office. There's like a half door and then there's like a little hallway and then there's the door to that particular area.
So the youths that are, are being housed in this, this facility? Why are they? What criteria is used to put them there? I mean, are, are they violent?
No, so what, what's, they're, they're victims mostly, right? They've been victims of abuse sexually, mentally, physically. And they've been pulled away from either the families or they just don't have families at all, like the families have given up on them. And so they're, they're trying to catch these kids before they become a problem as adults. They're trying to show them the right way to live, the right way to do things. And so that way, they don't become incarcerated and no triple C later on as problem adults. That's the point of this.
But the, the, the children that are being housed there, the, the, the minors that are being housed there? They, some of them can be, they might be violent?
So they've never been violent? They have maybe expressed violence to like a psychiatrist or therapist or something like that? But never acted out on violence? None of them have been previously incarcerated? So there's never, there's no individual kids there that have been in juvenile hall or something like that? At least that's my understanding from what we were told.
And so what kind of supervision, what kind of adult supervision is going to be in this?
Right.
Facility on a daily basis?
Yeah, so, so the house manager will be there on a daily basis and then two staff will always be there as well. It's really up to the staff to supervise those children. The house manager, like I said, fills in the gaps and handles everything else, right? But the, the, they, what we were told was, was those kids will be either an earshot or eye shot of one staff member at any given time, no matter what. At night, the doors are not allowed to be closed and they're, they're given bed checks every fifteen minutes. And so, so that's what occurs at the nighttime. And there's two staff members out on at night that do those bed checks. Hold on just for a second, there's one more thing I want to add. Every door in that facility is censored and has an alarm on it, individual alarm. So as soon as one of the kids goes through that door at any given time, they will hear the alarm and that alarm is particular to that particular room. So they'll know exactly who that kid is that leaves that room.
Are there security cameras in the facility?
Everywhere. So there's thirteen security cameras, I counted, inside and outside the building. And they cover, as I looked at it, they cover pretty much every spot in that building. There's a couple little gaps here and there, like corners, but nothing for egress points. Every egress point outside that building has been captured on the video cameras.
Can I talk again?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, you wanna?
Uh, go ahead.
Earlier you said that, you talked to them about do-outs? Security camera? But you just said that there are security cameras.
There are, yes.
They are?
Yes, they're professionally installed and they look, I mean, they're, they're not like a Ring camera, they're professional installed cameras.
So the.
A circuit.
So the issue is that it's been already installed?
Yes.
And it's checked off your do-outs?
No, so what, what I was referring to was, was that some of the outside cameras are facing the neighbor's yard.
Okay.
And that's illegal, so they need to pull it back so it doesn't encroach on the neighbor's privacy.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Hey.
My final question, I said that last time.
Yeah, you did.
I'm a teacher and if they're, are they going to be homeschooled?
Yes, and so, so they have a little classroom set up in that, in that facility where the kids can actually like. So basically what they've done is, is they've contracted out to different teachers here on island, Aia High School, you know, Roosevelt.
Regular school, you know.
Schools.
They'll be homeschools.
And they, yeah, and they will come in and they will do homeschooling. But they also do teleschooling as well, so they have like a video camera and a computer and the kids can do that as, as well too. But they also have like a desk and a, and a table and like an area for the teacher to do instruction.
The indoor problem is, okay, it's the outdoor, they need relaxation, they need to go out, PE, you know.
What was the address at the association meeting?
Yeah.
I viewed it when I toured the.
What did they do?
There's like a small gym in the back, okay, that they have back there that they said that the kids would be using to work out or whatever. They, the staff member will be back there, it was also covered under the security cameras. Behind that gym is a thirty-foot wall that goes straight up to another house.
So it's like a prison for them, right? They can't get out.
I wouldn't say a prison, I mean, I'm not calling Royal Summit House a prison.
Well, for the kids, it's prison.
Well, no, because they're, they are allowed to walk out at any moment. So every kid that goes into this facility, my understanding is, is they choose to be there.
Oh.
Okay, so it's a choice they make. And if, and if, they're not forced to be there.
Okay.
Okay? And if they choose to walk out, then they're not going to stop them from walking out. But what they will do is a staff member will walk with them till they're outside the community. And at that point, when they know that the kid is violating the, the terms of their agreement, they will call HPD and HPD will come and pick them up.
But still, I think they could find a better place for them than Royal Summit.
Maybe, you know, and, and, but, but it is what it is now.
I know, and they bought the house.
They bought the house. Okay, Paul.
Yeah, to put this in perspective, no one wants to have a sex offender or a potential sex offender in their neighborhood. But they are already there. If you go to the sex offender registry, I just went to my street in Aia Heights, which isn't as good as Royal Summit, but still a pretty nice place. And, and search for sex offenders within one mile radius of my one block street. Okay? You may say, well, some of those sex offenders are minor. Okay, yeah, but there are forty-seven sex offender, registered sex offenders within one mile radius of my house. So ladies and gentlemen, they're already there. And if you look at Chair Wood's excellent memorandum, the amount of security that's there is astronomically high compared to what's going on in our community. There's a sex offender that lives three doors down from me. There's no way to monitor what he does. There's no one that has an alarm that's going to go off when he gets out of his house. So again, no one wants to have a sex offender in their, in their neighborhood, but they're already there and they're not supervised.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions?
The difference is, they may be entitled to be there because they own the house. In this case, they're being placed there because they're not the owners of the house. It's Chara- Catholic Charities have decided to place this in this residence, residential area.
Yeah.
That's the difference, is a facility using public funds.
Facility in a neighborhood, correct.
Who is, hey, Curtis, we got feed coming in. Thank you. Um, Jane?
I was just curious if it was a religious institution or if it's being administered by the Hawaii Department of Health?
Right, so my understanding is it's being regulated by the Department of Health. It's, and I don't, it's being administered by them, Catholic Charities, but it's being regulated by the Department of Health. I don't know. Do you guys teach religious values? Okay, well, there you go. Okay. Okay, does that answer your question, Jane? Okay. Anybody else? Russell? That was a no, Russell, yes, they do not teach religious values in this facility. Okay, any other questions? Okay, so, so what we'll do is, is I will add this again on the March agenda. After you guys have, everybody's gotten the report and read it, I'm not going to call Catholic Charities back until May. Okay? Does that sound like a good plan? Jane?
What action, what action is required by the board? We have to.
Well, here's what I'm thinking, like, when, when we do the March one and you guys have all looked at the memo, we've all answered or seen all the answers to the questions, because there's still questions coming in. And I'm amending that memo as we speak right now. I say we, we have that, that, that meeting in March. Somebody put up that resolution, we vote on it and then we move forward. And then in May, I'm gonna bring Catholic Charities back to get an update on the action items that are occurring. Does that sound like a good plan to everybody? Russell?
Question, Chair.
Uh, no. Um, okay. All right, any other questions, board members on this?
Yes. Is this going to be with the tour or without the tour that you?
Well, that's, we'll work with that, we'll work with Catholic Charities and see if they'll provide another tour.
Okay.
So in the future, board members, if there is a tour available, I would highly recommend that you take advantage of it, okay? Usually it's May, myself and Francie and Danny who, who attend these tours. You know, be it O-triple-C, the cement quarry, this facility, whatever it might be. Highly recommend you do it, because what I don't want to do is keep bugging folks about seeing whatever is they want to show us. Okay? So when they come up, you can't make it, I totally understand, I try to work with people's schedules. But please take advantage of it when it arises, okay? No, it is not. They still have to go through that, that, they still have to go through this approval, certificate of need approval. But what is done is they bought the house. Okay, so that is a done. Okay. All right. Yeah, so there was a thing, let me ask the homeowners that question, when, do you guys know when the? Right? Oh, Mike, yeah, come up to them, or just speak loudly, I'll repeat what you said or something.
So the Hawaii State Health Planning and Development Agency, SHIPTA, they offer a public hearing and the last day to request a public hearing was this past Friday.
And you guys did?
We did.
Okay.
I think a lot of members did. So what's gonna happen now is SHIPTA will then send us an invite.
Okay.
And then we'll know what date, what time, and I think a brief instructions on what we need to do to participate in the hearing.
Let me.
Yes.
Okay, here's what I'd like you to do. Okay? I want you, when you get that date, you let me know.
Yes.
I might convene a special meeting prior, if that date happens before our next meeting. I'm gonna convene a special, special meeting, okay? And then we can vote on it then, all right? So that way they can go to the board with our resolution. Or they can go to this certificate of need, and they can go to that with that in hand. Okay?
Can I ask a question of the speaker? If, if she knows that if the meeting is going to have a virtual component or is that only a live in-person meeting?
It's gonna be in Zoom, according to.
Oh, it is?
SHIPTA offer.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Okay, so would be able to participate as well as a member of the public?
It was a public notice published in the Hawaii, Hawaii State Advertiser.
Yeah, it was published already?
Yes, it was, it was published already. And the seventh day ended this past Friday at four thirty PM. However, they already are going to vote a public hearing and that's when we get a notice because.
Okay, but the date of the public hearing hasn't been.
Yes, the date and time.
You can let us know, that would be, be appreciated.
Yes, you know, we were very lucky that we learned about this public hearing because if we did not, because Friday cast, this would be already automatically approved by the SHIPTA office. And once this is approved, then the Department of Health then would issue Catholic Charities the license to operate this special treatment facility. And it's a special treatment facility, that's what we're concerned about. You know, we know that there are sex offenders living all around our neighborhood, I even went to that site to look. But the special treatment facility right by our house, it directly affects me because when I sell my house for my long-term care, I'm gonna have to find a buyer that is willing to buy a house right next to a special treatment facility. And I hope I can.
I, I, I totally can empathize.
Yeah.
I know, I can totally empathize as a homeowner. Okay, so back to, back to the, roll this back a little bit here. Okay, so as soon as you know that date, let us know. Because I, I really do want you guys to go to this certificate of need.
Oh, we.
Hearing.
Yes.
With our voice as well.
Okay.
Okay? And hopefully that can, I don't know how this board will vote, but hopefully that will be something you can take to that meeting.
Yeah.
Okay? Okay, well, let me know the date so I can.
Yeah, they didn't give a specific date, but I think at our board meeting.
Right.
Dr. Luen said he's made it, it like approximately two weeks from now.
Right.
Until we get that.
I just. I just need to know the date.
Yes.
Let me know the date.
Definitely.
Let me know the date, that's all I'm asking. Because I could convene a special meeting with the board, and then we can, we can address, you know, I need some, clearly some of them didn't get to see all the information. So I want, and they also didn't have this. And so I want them to be able to read that and make an educated guess before they vote. And then I want you guys to go to that board meeting with whatever that vote is. It could be good, it could be in your favor or not, who knows?
We know.
But, but I want then, I want at least this board to have that resolution voted on and something to go with in front of that, that certificate of need.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
That's what we can do for you. Okay? All right. Okay, with that, I'm moving on because we literally have eight minutes. Okay. Uh, approval of the minutes for. Where am I at? What am I doing? I'm totally sidetracked. Oh, yes, um, okay, so approval of the written summary for video record Tuesday, January 14, 2025. Anybody have any corrections or anything they would like to make? Hey, anybody want to give a? All right, anybody want to second the motion? Any objections? Nothing heard? Thing heard, okay? Minutes, uh, for the approval of the written summary for video record Tuesday, January 14, 2025, those minutes are approved. Hey, can we move on? Hey, good. All right, board reports, executive, I have nothing to report, you guys have all heard everything I have done for this past month. Media relations and publicity, Arcoke. Okay, uh, Glenn, Parks and Rec. All right, Kemos not here, Francie, military and our governmental affairs.
Um, I believe Vic announced the date again, it was April 16 for the RAB committee. Um, and I have my hand raised, but I know we're short on time, but I just want to reiterate, um, because I was there at the house, that these, the youths are not sex offenders. This is a preventative program. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay. All right, thank you for that input. Okay, uh, Lawrence, environmental utilities.
I submitted testimony, I'm not sure if you're going to put that on record of why we should not have a landfill above our aquifer. So if you submitted it on record, people can read it, and if they have questions, they can ask. And then I also submitted the RAB meeting minutes from the last RAB meeting. So even that, if you have questions and you can ask or bring it up at the next RAB meeting.
Okay? Anything else? Okay, nothing heard. Education and culture, Danny?
Um, third Saturday community birthday happening this week and then every month, and I can throw the link in the chat.
Okay, all right, uh, with that, we got five minutes more. Uh, next meeting will be held, uh, Tuesday, March 11, 2025 at 7:00 PM here at the Public Library. You can see all these, uh, rebroadcasted on Allolo, and, uh, and then candidate registration, please register if you want to be on the board. I don't want a situation like we had recently. Yes, fill it out, make sure Curtis gets CC'd on or copied on it, he's tracking. Okay. Yes, everybody goes back to their districts. And then, uh, candidate filing and voter registration deadlines are February 21st at 4:30 PM. So make sure that you guys get that in before. Okay. Even though you're voting now, you're not, so, voted in next, right, you got to get voted. Okay, all right, with that, we're adjourned, and we got four minutes to spare. Thank you, everybody.